Thumbs up. Good evening, folks. Welcome to the August 28th, 2023 regular meeting of the East Bethel City Council. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Mr. Mundell, you want to do the honors?
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
A second.
Got a motion made and seconded for to adopt tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? None heard. Okay, do you, do you want to take it, or shall I do the introduction?
I'll take it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2017, the city of East Bethel authorized the creation of TIF District 1-3 in order to provide gap financing for the construction of the 48-unit Viking Preserve Housing Development. In order for TIF District 1-3 to receive tax increments, the parcels needed to meet low and moderate income requirements. Thirteen parcels did not meet this income qualification threshold and therefore need to be removed from the TIF district and decertified by the county. The excess tax increment received since the inception of this district for these parcels will be returned to the county once the city receives the final tax settlement in December of 2023. Stacy Quillbanger, financial consultant with Ellers, will present a brief background of tax increment financing and review the proposal for decertification of the properties that do not meet the TIF requirements for the Viking Preserve projects. Stacy?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Good to see you all. I think we'll just jump right into it. The little brief overview on tax increment financing, and then we'll talk about your districts. Just kind of give you a status of where all four of them are at, and then we'll talk about the action before you tonight. So essentially, tax increment financing is the ability to capture all or a portion of the increased taxes from a development. So if we go to the next slide, it'll give you a visualization of this. As when you create a TIF district, we have what's called the base value or frozen value that's in there. So essentially, when the TIF laws were created back in the seventies, they didn't want any of the taxing jurisdictions to be harmed by development. So the city, the county, and the school districts. So that value and that tax revenue that you're getting when you create the district, it's frozen through time, and you'll continue to collect the taxes off of that. What happens is development will happen, and that increased valuation over time is what you capture for the tax increment. And then finally, when the district is done at the end of the term, you get 100% of all those taxes that are on that. So again, it's just the incremental value in taxes that you're able to receive. There are a couple of things that aren't captured in tax increment. You know, obviously, we don't capture those base taxes that we talked about. So again, those are going back to the taxing entities. But there's also things that are called state taxes. So those were created back actually in 2010 to pay for the education system when we had a big tax change, but now it just goes to the state's general fund. Those state taxes are paid only by commercial industrial property, so housing does not pay that. Also, if you happen to have lake property and cabins, cabins do pay that as well. The second thing that's not captured in TIF is market value taxes. So basically, those are voter-approved referendums that are going to pay for bond issues, typically school district ones. So again, those aren't captured for the development because they're going to pay for other obligations. So what can tax increment used for? It's always the question that we get. Typically, the big ones or the ones that we see a lot of are for land acquisition. It can be for demolition. It can be for remediation. It's site improvements that can be grading and excavation, underground parking, basically anything from the ground down or else your parking structures that you have. Now, when it comes to affordable housing developments, which you do have a few districts, or that's most of your districts, it can be used for anything because anything is a qualified cost for affordable housing. So there's, there are six types of districts. You guys only utilize two of them, which is pretty typical of a growing community. The two typical that you use are housing tax increment districts, which those have a 26-year term. And the reason for the long term, it's about affordability, right? So they said, the legislature in the wisdom said, you know, if we want to guarantee longer-term affordability, let's give a longer term for that. And then you also have economic development districts, which those are for basically greenfield development, right? So you have a cornfield, so to speak, that's going to get developed on, and it's about manufacturing. It has a shorter term because again, it's a vacant parcel of land. That should be a quick return on that. So if we look at economic development, the future use is really manufacturing warehouse. It's all about job creation on those. Those TIF districts have a maximum of nine years of eligibility that you can collect the increment from. And again, one of our qualifications is that at least 85% has to be for that use. It's really about creating jobs. Now, that's to be said, you can have a project like Aggressive Hydraulics, which is one of yours, that can have more office than just 15% because that office is really supporting that manufacturing and distribution facility. So we have Aggressive Hydraulics, which you created back in 2021. This was phase two. So phase one also did a good assistance, and that paid off quickly. And then they came in for their expansion. So with that, they have additional job creation goals that they have. You are providing them $190,000 in pay-as-you-go tax increment over eight years. Even though the district's nine years, you're only giving them eight years of assistance. And for those of you that maybe haven't been on councils long or when we created all these districts, what does it mean by pay-as-you-go? So basically, the risk is on the developer that they've got to go out and finance those improvements, and then you give them a note once they're done with construction and have their certificate of occupancy. So that $190,000 note, they already financed with the bank. And then essentially, as they pay their taxes like everyone does, right, in May and October, when we get those tax increment receipts, then the city turns around and pays the developer a portion of those in August and then February of the following year on that. So again, it's pay-as-you-go because the developers are paying the taxes, and then you're just giving a portion back to them. Housing, again, that's a 26-year term maximum. There's two types of things that can happen in a housing district. It can either be rental housing, which you have a couple of that we'll talk about, or you can have owner-occupied housing. So essentially, the qualifications for a rental project is that at least 20% of the units have to be affordable at 50% of the area median income or below, or 40% of the units have to be affordable at 60% of the area median income below. We have up in the chart what those rents and incomes are for 50 and 60%. These are set annually by HUD, the Housing, Department of Housing and Urban Development. So it's for the county-specific that we have for this area. And again, all the metropolitan councils fall under those same guidelines for income and that. So on a rental, it's an annual certification. So once the developer does construct that project, they have to report to the city annually to show that they met the threshold of either 20 at 50 or 40 at 60. The second one is for owner-occupied housing. You have a little bit more leeway. So 95% of the lots or units sold have to be for low and moderate income. So for a household of two or less, that's 100% of the area median income. And right now, the area median income is 124.9, so it's pretty high. And if it's three or more living in that, that household, then it's 115% of the area median income. And that is a one-time test. So that first purchaser, that's the test threshold that we look at and review to see if they meet that criteria. Then after that, it can be sold to anybody else in the future. So you have three housing TIF districts in your city, okay? So you have TIF District 1-2, which was created in 2017. That was for Ram Housing Development, in that you have two rental apartment units in there. So it's East Bethel Village Apartments 1 and 2, okay? Both of those are 67 units, and both of those, they took the selection of 20% of the units at 50% of the area median income. So since those were constructed and once they've gotten their certificate of occupancy, they've been reporting to the city annually that we review to make sure they're meeting those threshold incomes. As you can see, we've got one pay-as-you-go note for eight years and one's for 15. That second one for 15, we haven't issued yet because we're still waiting for the final information to review to see if that's going to be the amount and the term essentially. But the thing to note again, housing TIF districts are 26 years, okay? But your assistance is only for eight years or 10 years. So it doesn't have to be 26 years of assistance that you're giving. We really right-size that. So part of our job and what we have to do is we look at the development performance as they come in, and we look at their assistance request, and we benchmark that against industry standard for everything from acquisition costs, construction costs, operating costs, et cetera, to help size what's reasonable for reasonable rate of return for that developer. The second housing district we have is 1-3. That's a point of discussion for tonight for removal of parcels. That's the 48-unit single-family development that Jack had alluded to, and we've given them about a $1.1 million pay-as-you-go note. That's over essentially a 10-year term. Again, it's a 26-year district, but it's only 10 years that you're providing assistance. And then the final one was the Trident Development. I'm not sure what their final name was for their senior housing development. That is an assisted living facility. That's TIF District 1-4. That was created in 2018. And they also selected that 20% at 50% affordability. And again, with them, they have a pay-as-you-go note, but it's only nine years. Now, the thing to note about housing districts, that's a little bit different. There's two things there. One, you know, even though you're only giving assistance through the term, which is shorter than 26 years, a city can make an election to keep that district open longer as long as those developments keep reporting through the term of 26 years. So as a city council, once those obligations are all paid off in those districts, you'll have a choice or selection that if they're still reporting and they still meet those income requirements, you can keep the district open, and you could collect the tax increment, and you could utilize that increment for other affordable housing developments in the city. And that can be anything as new construction for, you know, apartments. It could be for rehabilitation. What a lot of cities use it for is single-family rehab programs because you have those higher income thresholds, but it's a, it's a funding source that if you want to provide programs to incentivize homeowners to actually make certain improvements, capital improvements to their house. TIF 1-3, the action before you tonight is of the 48 units, 13 of them did not qualify because they didn't meet those income thresholds when we did the review of the information that they provided. What statute does require is because they don't meet the income qualifications, we have to decertify them out of the district. You don't have a choice in that. So again, the action before you tonight is to decertify those 13 parcels out of TIF District 1-3, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
I want to compliment you again. You're the most concise person I've ever listened to. It's amazing how concise you are in presenting information. Thank you. Clear and concise.
Stacy, what's the advantages for a city to keep a TIF open or to just close it up?
Mayor, council member, again, really the only benefits on for housing districts is if you want to have a funding source, which you're able to capture those dollars to do something else you want to do for affordable housing. Otherwise, it's best to be certified, and you get back on the tax rolls. Now, with economic development districts or other districts, you don't get that choice. Once those obligations are paid off, you're legally required to decertify those. You only get that choice on housing districts.
Just for the sake of the audience and anybody watching it, we specifically ask you to come tonight and help educate us. It just seemed, you know, before we just make a decision one way or the other, it's, it's good to take an opportunity to get better educated about the whole topic. So thank you for that. Do we know how much has to be repaid on those particular, on the 13 parcels?
Yep, Mayor, council member, we do. I do not have that off the top of my head, but those calculations have been done. So those dollars from prior years and this year's will be returned to the county at the end of the year, and then it'll be redistributed back to the city then, for proportion share.
The only other question I had was how does it relate to the two large bills to approve, which are related to the TIF districts? I'm sure Mike has his finger right on that right now. I see him nodding his head. But on, on the bills that were to approve shortly, there's two, well, it's a total of about $350,000.
Yep, so those, essentially, those are the pay-as-you-go notes for the TIF 1-2 and 1-3.
Okay, including what we're doing tonight, right?
Yep, so those will be on your bill list semi-annually moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
There's Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy.
And if there are no other questions, staff recommends city council consider approval of Resolution 2023-58, decertifying those 13 homes that didn't qualify for the TIF assistance in that district.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-58.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Second item is the public hearing on the 3.2% off-sale liquor license.
Staff is recommending that council conduct a public hearing to take comments from the public regarding an application and request for a 3.2% off-sale liquor license for River County Cooperative. At the conclusion of the public hearing, council has requested to consider the approval of the 3.2% off-sale liquor license for River County Cooperative Doing Businesses Holiday Store Number 2653861. A background check has been completed without any issues. All application materials and fees have been submitted for the 3.2% off-sale liquor license. Final approval of the license is contingent on the approval of the State Commissioner of Public Safety and approval of city council is required prior to any action by the state. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive comments on the off-sale liquor license for River County Cooperative Doing Businesses Holiday Store 2653861. Once the public hearing is closed and if there are no reasons to deny the license, staff recommends council consider approval of a 3.2% off-sale liquor license for River County Cooperative Doing Businesses Holiday Number 2653861, located at 1341 187th Lane in East Bethel, Minnesota.
Okay, I'd like to ask our city attorney, Mr. Larson, a question. It's not on this one, but on the, I believe it's on regarding the one on the storage, accessory storage containers. It says a motion to open a public hearing and a motion to close it. I wasn't familiar with that procedure. Is it common or is it necessary now, or do I just open it?
I have a question for the city administrator. City administrator, has this been noticed as a public hearing?
Yes, it has.
Then as long as it's been a notice for a public hearing, there does not need to be a motion or second to open a public hearing.
Thank you.
You just need to call it open.
Okay, we'll call the public hearing open for the 3.2% off-sale liquor license application by River Country Co-op. Anybody have any comments about that? Questions, comments? None heard. We'll close the public hearing.
I move to, I move to approve the license.
You moved to approve the license application by River Country Co-op?
Cool, yep.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Okay. It's time for the Anoka County Sheriff's Office Monthly Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening.
My name's Sergeant Justin Nelson with the Anoka County Sheriff's Office, taking the place for Lieutenant Peters today, who's out on vacation.
Well-earned.
Yes, it is. All right, in East Bethel in July, July had a total of 455 calls for service. Deputies responded to two burglaries, one assault, and 70 medicals. Theft calls were up two from June to nine in July. There were 11 warrant arrests made in the city of East Bethel, which is two arrests more than the previous highest total of nine, which we saw in the month of April. Deputies' traffic enforcement efforts resulted in the issuance of 22 traffic citations on city streets. Some notable calls for service that deputies handled over the past month. Deputy Wickland had an HRO, which is a harassment restraining order, and a violation, and a flee in a motor vehicle. On July 1st at 19:20, Deputy Wickland was dispatched to an address located in the 22800 block of Tippy Canoe Street Northwest or Northeast on a report of a harassment restraining order violation in progress. Prior to his arrival, deputies learned that a black sedan being driven by the suspect was leaving the area southbound on Baton towards 221st Avenue. As deputies arrived in the area, Deputy Wickland attempted to stop the vehicle utilizing his emergency lights and sirens, but the vehicle continued southbound. At this point, a second deputy arrived in the area in front of the vehicle and positioned his squad at an angle across the road to get it to stop. The suspect vehicle rammed the second squad and attempted to flee the area northbound on Baton. Deputy Wickland continued to follow this fleeing vehicle and eventually utilized a pit maneuver to force the vehicle off the road near Gopher and 237th. This affected an arrest of the driver. Deputies then transported the male to jail and booked him on an HRO violation and fleeing in a motor vehicle. On July 9th, Deputy Johnson was on routine patrol in the area of Viking and Highway 65 when he noticed a red passenger car traveling westbound on Viking with grass hanging up of its rear bumper. Deputy Johnson noticed that the vehicle drove over the center line and fog line several times in erratic fashion. Deputy Johnson stopped the vehicle and contacted the driver, who exhibited signs of alcohol impairment. Deputy Johnson had the driver perform SFSTs, which are standardized field sobriety tests, which he ultimately failed. The driver provided a preliminary breath sample, which indicated a .16. The driver was arrested and transported to the sheriff's office, where he submitted to an evidentiary test that resulted in that .16, BAC. That driver was charged with third-degree DWI and booked into the Anoka County Jail. On July 16th, Deputy Johnson had a warrant arrest. He responded to an address in the 19700 block of Rochester Street Northeast on an anonymous report of males in the address with several felony warrants for miscellaneous drug offenses. Deputies arrived and located the group of people standing near a vehicle. Deputies recognized one of the males from previous contacts as having outstanding warrants for his arrest. A female there was also identified as having active warrant. These two were properly identified, and their warrants were confirmed through dispatch. They were both arrested and booked into the Anoka County Jail for their outstanding warrants. On July 24th, Deputy Sullivan was dispatched to Klondike Drive and Highway 65 on the report of an unconscious person sleeping behind the wheel of a silver truck. On arrival, Deputy Sullivan woke the male up, who exhibited signs of impairment. Multiple bags with what appeared to be narcotics and prescription pills were in plain view near the driver inside the vehicle. The driver was asked to perform standardized field sobriety testing, which he did, and he ultimately failed. The driver was arrested for DWI, and his vehicle was searched. During that search of the vehicle, the deputy uncovered 136 grams of marijuana, 22 grams of cocaine, hallucinogenic mushrooms, and a large amount of Xanax prescription pills. A warrant for the driver's blood was drafted and signed by a judge. The male was transported to a local hospital for a blood draw and booked into jail on DWI and drug possession. Charges are forthcoming pending forensic examination of the driver's blood and the suspected narcotics. Overall, property crimes in July were up from July and previous months earlier this year. These thefts occurred both during daytime and nighttime hours. As a reminder for everyone, please continue to call anything suspicious you see in your neighborhoods. For July, there were two reported burglaries, nine reported thefts, one reported criminal sexual conduct, one reported assault, one damaged property, two personal injury accidents, 16 property damage accidents, 70 medicals, 25 animal complaints, 26 alarms, four felony arrests, three gross misdemeanor arrests, six misdemeanor arrests, two DWI arrests, one domestic assault arrest, 11 warrant arrests, 112 traffic stops resulting in 22 citations. Does anyone have any questions or comments for me?
I, I do have some questions for you. In the opening paragraph on this, for deputies' traffic enforcement efforts resulted in the issuance of 22 traffic citations on city roads. Is that just city roads and not county, not highway?
I mistook. It was any, any, any road in the city, including state highways, county roads, and city streets.
I thought it might just be semantics, but I just wanted to clarify that. At the end, you talk about property crimes. What kind of property crimes? Can you give some examples of what these could be?
Yep, there's a lot. There's been thefts from vehicles. It's a common problem. Kids causing problems, damaging various things like mailboxes, stuff like that. Right off the top of my head, I can't think of any other ones that there have been, but that's all I can recall at this time.
Okay.
You had any problems on the waters?
In the city of East Bethel, not really, no.
Like on Coon Lake?
Actually, I don't remember the last time there was a call on Coon Lake, surprisingly.
Wow.
But we, but we do have a, we do have a rec deputy that is out there regularly patrolling, so.
On the bar graph, this would be on page 14 of the packet, that shows comparing year-to-date versus previous years.
Yes.
That it... One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven of the eight graphs are, look like they're ticking up from last year or previous years. Is that, you know, if that's kind of normal countywide, or is it something in particular to East Bethel?
It, it seems to be a little bit normal countywide. Things have been picking up, more populations moving into the area, and we've got a lot of deputies that are real go-getters and getting out there and finding stuff.
Okay.
You're finding the speeds are increasing a little bit on 65 and 22?
Yes, yep. I personally sit out, I like to sit on Highway 65 in the middle of the night, and I'm finding a lot of people going 90-plus regularly.
Oops.
Yeah. So we, we try to get out there. I know my team is out there a lot, and I'm personally myself out there quite regularly because that is way too fast.
A lot of people, I'd like to go around traffic by 22 in Lexington. There's EJ's bar there.
Passing on the right.
Yep, a lot of it.
Okay, I can have the East Bethel deputies give it a little extra patrol.
Because you're right around 3, 4 o'clock.
The evening rush home.
Yeah, well, they have a little accident, it's going to be a little bit of wait.
It is. I will let the East Bethel deputies know.
Great.
If there's nothing else, I will pass the floor over to Sheriff Wise.
Thank you, and thank you, Sheriff, for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
No, it's my pleasure to join you tonight. I was here back in February, I guess we discussed. For the record, my name is Brad Wise, the new Anoka County Sheriff as of January 3rd.
You're an old hat now, right?
2023. Well, I'm working on getting there. The good news is that, if you don't recall, is that I have a lot of Anoka County law enforcement experience in that I spent 28 years at Coon Rapids with the last 11 as police chief before I, before I came into this office. But specifically, I wanted to come to talk a little bit about the contract. I know you've been discussing the contract, and you might have some concerns that you want to get addressed here with me in person. That said, if you don't mind, I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to give you an overview because you're living in times, as it relates to law enforcement staffing, that are unfamiliar to me, too. You've heard many anecdotes about there used to be large numbers of people applying for individual vacancies, and those days are gone. You've heard many anecdotes about there used to be large numbers of people applying for individual vacancies, and those days are gone. Frankly, we need to figure out a way how to get those days back. We're working on it at the sheriff's office, I assure you, but it's a larger conversation than that. Probably my favorite story that I like to tell, true story. When I first was looking for a cop job, I applied with the city of Osseo. At the time, Osseo had four cops, town of two thousand and four cops. My rejection letter from Osseo said they received over two-hundred-and-fifty applicants, and I wasn't selected to move forward. I saved that letter, but I use it as a good point of reference, because now we at the sheriff's office interview every single person that's willing to turn in an application. But just for the sake of the citizens for sure, and you as the council as a whole, the way I talk about law enforcement staffing is that if you want to have a fully-staffed law enforcement agency in the state of Minnesota, you need four things. You need support of the citizens, and by that I don't mean blind support for rogue cops, I just mean general support for the work that's being done. You need support of the elected officials, you need a good culture in the law enforcement agency, and then you need competitive wages. If you don't have any one of those four things, you're in trouble. And I don't have to point out to you, in our state, we've had places where, in particular, citizen support or elected official support is publicly waning, and it's been done so in such a way that it's caused a number of young people interested in the profession to nearly disappear. That's nobody in this room's fault, but we're all paying the price for that. So, at the sheriff's office, specifically, I'll talk a little bit about wages. In that, I call it, I refer to it as the Wild West of labor contracts, and get used to this. It's not, I don't see it going away. I'll give you two things, if you ever have a mind to, to do a little research on your own. The state of Minnesota, through their jobs website, you can see the number of police officer vacancies that are listed. Or through the League of Minnesota Cities, which I'm sure you remember here, they have a jobs board that's listed on there. They'll discuss how many job vacancies there are. And the second one I'd point you to is law enforcement labor services. Every, well, actually, I shouldn't say that. Most law enforcement officers in the state of Minnesota are represented by a union. Law enforcement labor services on their website has contracts listed on there, publicly listed, so if you wanted to read how these labor contracts, or you can see them for yourselves, because you're hearing things in the news such as hiring bonuses, retention bonuses, wage adjustments. And these wage adjustments, especially the ones, or the one that you're having to face here with a property tax levy, that's really, doesn't make any of you very happy. I understand that. But you, at least you can figure out the math to get to the why. And I do want you to hear from me is that I came from the city of Coon Rapids where the levy fell mostly on homeowners. I was a homeowner in that city. My mom was a homeowner in that city. I understand the impact on homeowners. I am unabashed, physical conservative. That said, I need the cops to be paid, or I won't have cops working for me. And I want to tell you about one thing in particular locally, because it, it impacts us here, is that you would, think of what you will for the city of Blaine. City of Blaine is doing very well economically. Lots of new residents, lots of industrial growth. Their tax base is doing really well. They voluntarily, meaning outside of a labor contract, raised their starting wage to forty-four-seventy-seven an hour for a police officer, which made them among the highest in the state of Minnesota, and they did that for the sake of that four-legged stool that I was talking about, competitive wages. They wanted to make sure that they were a destination law enforcement agency, that they were scooping up the people that were leaving other law enforcement agencies that didn't have the kinds of support from the citizens and the city council. I could name them here, the cities that they're leaving from. I won't do that for the sake of, I don't know, I'll cut them a break, how about that? But probably within the county of Hennepin, somewhere in that county, people are leaving those agencies, and we're looking, other agencies are looking to swoop them up. So their forty-four-seventy-seven rate was in contrast to our thirty-one-fifty-seven rate, which is what we were at starting. If you're doing the math quick, that's you, a starting Blaine cop, earned twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars more a year than a starting Anoka County Sheriff's Deputy through action of their city council that they took this spring. But it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that when Blaine has an opening, people who can go and make more money were doing that, they were leaving. And, you know, I hope you, without belaboring the point, you might have caught a couple of weeks ago, there's a, the city of Goodhue, Minnesota, lost its police department over a wage dispute. Seven cops all resigned on the same day, the entire department, over a wage dispute. That would have been unthinkable ten years ago, because there wouldn't have been seven places for them people to go to, but every one of those seven, I guarantee you, had multiple job offers that they were just weighing. And then when it sort of coalesced around not being able to get the city council there to knuckle under, and trust me, I understand city councils not wanting to, to deal with that kind of pressure. But in the end, the, the officers there all had a place to go, and they all left, and now the city of Goodhue is left picking up the pieces. So that said, I know there's a fourteen percent increase for the law enforcement contract for, from the sheriff's office. I don't like having to, to present that to you. I wish it was some way different. The only thing that we lucked out on is that the state, the legislature and the governor's office was tipped off that this thing was coming, meaning this, this wage pressure, because the, the places especially that are having the hardest time recruiting, I assure you are weighing hiring bonuses that are bigger than anything we've previously imagined. But the, the state used some of their surplus to offer up this public safety aid. And mind you, I had no part in how that formula was created. The, your state representatives all came up with the formula, but thank goodness that East Bethel got something over five hundred thousand dollars. For the, at least in part, the legislative intent was to soften the blow for cities so that city taxpayers weren't looking at laying off their cops. Departments that had their own police departments, I assure you, many cities would have been forced to do layoffs had it not been for that public safety aid. So in many ways, we're grateful for that, that money to exist, and of course, you know, you have decisions that you can make on that. But with that, I mean, I have a bunch of data in front of me, not sure what direction you want to go, but I want you to know that I'm an open book, and I'll tell you whatever I can, how to answer whatever questions you might have.
Anybody else have questions? Because I don't want to monopolize the time, so I'll defer to everybody else first. Okay, first of all, I thank you for being here. And yeah, you're right, we weren't too keen on the news.
I don't blame you.
And we, we understand that it's based on reality. It's not something you're cooking up or anything. We don't, don't doubt the reality of it. But it's two things. One is, and I talked with Julie Brassad, our Anoka County Commissioner this morning, and she originally backgrounded me when we first found out about it. The, the, what, the preparatory communication was nonexistent. And I don't know whose fault that is, but whoever's it is, it's a lot easier to take a hard shot if you're like, ready for it, you know, somewhat. But to be, to arrive at the point of, you know, really trying to put the budget to sleep, to bed, and then have this pop up was kind of a shock. So in the future, better communication, whether it's from your department or from the county commissioners, however, you know, the newspaper, whatever, would be well-advised. And the other thing is that I spoke with, met with and spoke with Brad Kirkham, the mayor of Ham Lake, and a couple of folks, and we were looking at the information, and, you know, the summary, excuse me, bound and determined to destroy this thing, I guess. The summary sheet, you know, X number of hours and the administrative proration and whatnot. And when they netted out, they had, they had a, an inspector. And when they netted that out of the equation, their summary sheet was about the same as ours, thirty-six hours per day, and you know, the administrative allocation, vehicle allocation, all that kind of stuff. And yet, their, their cost was about the same as ours, you know, within a hundred thousand dollars or so. And yet, they have thirty-five percent more calls than East Bethel has. And so it raised a question in my mind of, we, we have two things that are, that are vexing. And one is, we don't, we don't know that the numbers are correct. You know, because everybody, anybody can make this mistake when you're dealing with thousands of numbers. And the other thing is, we don't know the formula. We don't know how the prorations are made. What is the basis of the prorations? Because like Ham Lake has thirty-eight percent more population, but we're a bigger county geographically. And so how is the proration made, and particularly the administrative costs, which are just complete, completely a black box as far as we're concerned? We don't, we don't know what, what the details behind that is. So just trying to, I'm just trying to explain where, where our concerns or questions come from.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head I can give you a satisfactory answer in that regard. Other than to say I, I was given the heads up to make the comparison, but I'll say this, is that throughout the course of time, however long the city of East Bethel's had a contract with the sheriff's office, in the end, it's city councils just like this that are deciding on what level of service you want. Whether, and that might be a function of response times, or it could be the number of calls per service for each individual deputy. And that, that's something that you as a council could make a decision to, you know, to dial that knob a little bit. I would say on that space, when I would look at the difference, thirty-six hours of deputy coverage for Ham Lake versus thirty-six hours of East Bethel coverage, as an East Bethel resident, if I were a East Bethel resident, I would say my city council made a higher priority to have more coverage for the number of citizens, and that it was a decision of the council to have done that, as opposed to, I would hope it would not be your goal to, to want to offer the bare-bones service, the bare minimum of law enforcement service. And the way service you would measure might be something like response times, maybe making, you know, comparisons related to, like, closure rate for, like, an investigation, for instance, whether or not it was successfully investigated and led to an arrest. Those are data points that we do measure, that, that they're across the board, like percentages of arrests. But I would say the difference, primary difference between your contract and Ham Lake's contract is that this city council somewhere along the way decided you wanted deputy coverage that was equal to what Ham Lake was offering, despite the fact your population was smaller. Probably in recognition that being forty-eight square miles, you're a big city. There's a lot of distance to cover.
Mr. Miller pointed out to all of our surprise, we're the sixth largest city in Minnesota by geographic area.
Yeah, it's, it's huge.
Yeah, I was, I was flabbergasted to hear that.
Yeah, and, you know, in cities like this, kind of the benefit, well, I would say the primary benefit of having a contract with the sheriff's office is you have built-in backup. So for instance, I, I worked for, for a, a city that had, you know, a good number of officers, and next door was Anoka, and next door was.
Is that like mutual aid?
Yeah, mutual aid stuff. So, but there, but two in places like that, and, and I'm, I'm just saying had this happen, I'm not saying it did happen, but say had Anoka, the city of Anoka, because of their Jackson Street, you know, partying or whatever, had the city of Anoka had a bare-bones police department, and then instead sort of made the policy decision, we're going to rely on Coon Rapids to provide backup to our officers because we don't have to pay for it. Somewhere along the line, Coon Rapids would have said, stop, we're not doing your mutual aid anymore.
Externalizing the cost to somebody else.
Yeah, you got to pay for that. The, the beauty of the sheriff's office for East Bethel is you have built-in, you don't need to ask for a mutual aid assist. So in the city of Anoka, for instance, if they do happen to be busy, let's say a big fight breaks out, they get on the air and they ask other agencies to send backup, and they have to do that. The law actually requires them to physically ask to have backup come. In East Bethel, when one of our deputies makes a DWI arrest, which I guarantee you is two hours of paperwork and another forty-five minutes to jail and back, minimum, is that you have built-in backup that comes to fill the, the gap. So I, to me, I think maybe you might want to have maybe a work session somewhere along the line about level of service and how you want to approach level of service, being respectful of the taxpayers, because I'm, I sat in eleven years of city council members. I know you're hearing it from your residents. And they don't mind, and what I've heard is that residents don't mind paying if they know what they're paying for.
Exactly.
And.
And we have to be educated in order to communicate it.
Yep, and, and so I would say on its face, Ham Lake has dialed back its level of service, and maybe are forgetting that they're growing. I, you know, I guess that would be a good conversation or a good question to ask them. Ham Lake is adding a lot of residents.
But you understand, it's, it's, the curious thing that I mentioned is, how is it that, what, they have thirty-five percent more calls, but we're both paying essentially the same amount, within, within ten percent?
Yeah.
Certainly, it should be like thirty-five percent difference. Again, you get back to the question, well, what is the basis for the proration?
Well, the glass, the glass half-full side of that conversation would be for every call of service, your citizen is getting more of the deputy's time, whether it's time to sit and talk to them in the midst of whatever incident they're reporting, or they're getting more investigative time, which might lead to an increased solve rate, but.
But you're saying we should maybe look at the total number of hours and think about dialing it back to thirty-two or thirty or something?
I'm not suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is that you take a look at your level of service and maybe talk to your residents and listen to them. Because I, again, I came from a city that was busy. Coon Rapids, sixty-three thousand residents right now. They're at about fifty-six thousand calls for service, so that's one call, almost one call for service per resident. You're not even half that here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, so what I would hear from a Coon Rapids resident was, you're copped in, take the time to really listen to me, and it was probably because the radio was squawking and they had to go somewhere else, and they're arranging these priorities in their minds. I'm saying I would love to have that kind of detailed conversation with you so that you don't get lost in, in some of these numbers, because service level, level matters to people who are victims. And they don't want to feel like they're unimportant, or that the officer or deputy has something that they need to get to that's more important than me. So there's a lot to be said for that time investment, and, and I would say a community survey would probably be a good thing, if you're thinking about next year. A community survey about the service and whether or not people feel like they're, and, you know, it's something that I can explore doing, too. If people are feeling like the deputy is investing in my problem and really looking to solve it for me, because certainly that would be the expectation. I mean, I was, I was thrilled to come to the sheriff's office and know that the calls for service were at the numbers that they were, so that they know that deputies have time to invest in individuals and not make them feel like they're rushed doing something else. Because the killer for some cities is, if, if they, if a deputy does wind up making arrests, I mean, the, the idea of having to hurry up and get done, and oh, man, I shouldn't maybe make this arrest for DWI because I don't want to leave my city. Those pressures are real, and happen in other places, and, and we, I think we would want to be really careful about that here up in East Bethel. My sense is you got a good thing going. I've heard that we have a pretty good reputation up here, and people like the kind of service at the beginning.
That's true.
And, and I would, you know, for me as a city council member, I'd go, yeah, this is number, I don't like this fourteen percent increase. We got this public safety aid. We're gonna, we're gonna leverage it as best we can, and we're gonna sit down and figure out whether or not we have the right level of service, whether we should, you know, adjust the dial sum. If it were me, I think.
And again, our, our job is to communicate it effectively.
Yeah.
And not, not just the elected people, but city staff and other people.
Yeah, no question.
That we can communicate it. But I have one request, and I'll, I don't want to, I know you've had a long day already, so. And that is, is it possible for someone on your staff who is integrally involved in the preparation of those summary sheets to just write out the methodology and send it to me at least of how those are, how things are calculated and prorated, particularly the proration part of it?
Yeah.
Because I would just like to understand that.
The prorated pieces are the, you know, it's the smaller dollar amounts, but they're not zero, for sure. They do add up when you.
Well, like administrative costs.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is a complete black box, as far as I can tell.
Yep.
From our point of view.
Yep.
The other things are pretty clear, you know, the amount for a car maintenance, all that kind of stuff.
Wages, cars, miles, yep.
That's pretty clear, but, you know, administrative proration is a complete black box.
Yeah, and I don't want to guess for you, because I, I don't know that I could adequately explain the difference right now. I mean, I have an educated guess, but I might be wrong, but those more calls for service probably equal more administrative time. Just because papers want to be, you know, they have to be, well, not scanned anymore, but there's data requests and all sorts of things. But we could find those, that kind of detail for you. Or criminal charges, if there are more arrests because of the more calls for service, and arrests would mean more administrative costs working with the court.
There is a methodology.
I'm certain there is one that would make sense.
I just want to know what it is.
Yeah.
Do you need my card or anything?
I think I can find you. I think I can find you.
You sure?
Pretty sure I can find you. Mr. Davis, I'm sure is readily available to you and I'd be happy to.
He'll turn you on to me real quick. I know exactly where that guy is. Okay, good. Well, thank you so much for your time and helping us understand this.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's a big thing for us.
And I hate to sound silly about that, but it's an honor to serve the citizens of East Bethel. It truly is. And if there's some way that we can improve our service, we're always open to doing that for the, keeping this. You've got a good gem up here, this is a safe community. When you hear some of the crime numbers that were just discussed, again, a guy coming from Coon Rapids kind of makes me chuckle. You people are living in heaven, remember that. So, all right, thank you very much to you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too. Chief Sanow. Is it Sanow or Sano?
Sanow.
Sanow, okay.
Sanow. Good afternoon, Council and Mayor, Mr. Mayor. I have the July fire report. In the month of July, we responded to eighty-six calls for service. Out of those, we had sixty-nine medicals, two accidents, six alarms, and two fires. As of today, at about five-thirty, we have responded to six-hundred-and-twenty-two calls for service compared to five-hundred-and-ninety-three last year. So at our current rate, we're still trending right around a thousand calls for the year. With that, then just a couple reminders. Schools going to be starting on September fifth for the elementary schools on Polk Street. We'll see an increase in traffic on Sims and Polk. The highest volume of traffic will be from eight-forty-five AM to ten, nine, ten AM, and from three-forty-five to four PM. So use extra caution when you're in that area. I do believe there is a speed limit at that time of the day with flashing lights. And I have seen deputies out there patrolling for speed and that. So just watch that and just remind that kids are going to be walking to the buses starting at about six-thirty in the morning. And they'll be going home probably about four-thirty, five o'clock on the side of the roads. Then with the new Holiday Station opening soon, there's going to be an increase in traffic at one-hundred-and-eighty-seventh and sixty-five. Right now, like I said, we haven't had a lot of accidents there since it's been closed, but we do expect some increase on those with people pulling out on Highway sixty-five early in the morning and that. Let's see, let's see, the end of the gardening season's coming, unfortunately. And I'm just going to let everybody know is it's, you cannot burn garden debris in that. Along with the leaves off the trees, you cannot burn those. They need to be composted. And then with the two, the colder weather coming and fall coming, unfortunately, we're going to have to start using the furnaces again. So please have your CO detectors and smoke detectors checked out and have your furnace checked out. With that, that's all I got. I can take questions and that.
How's the wildfire danger looking?
Right now, it's good, but as the DNR stated last week at the fair, September's going to be coming up with the drought and everything happening. Everything's going to start drying out and we're going to get busy again. So we haven't been, you know, too busy with those, but we are expecting to get busy. So expect burning restrictions to come back on in September again sometime.
Yes, guess we're going to be into the nineties at the end of this week.
Yeah, nineties up.
Not loving that.
Yeah, neither am I.
No.
Any other questions from Council?
No.
Audience? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the public hearing on the accessory storage container ordinance change.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I guess, I guess Mr. Berg's going to take the lead on that one.
I sure will. Councilman Miller has proposed amendments to the city ordinance, Appendix A, zoning section ten dash four, accessory storage containers. Minnesota state statute, and I won't read the statute there, but requires that any proposed amendments to a zoning ordinance be reviewed by the planning agency of the city and/or the local unit of government. East Bethel city ordinance also requires that a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance text and/or zoning map make its way through the planning commission. Section ten dash four accessory storage containers is on the screen. It says that accessory storage containers as defined in section oh-one, the general provisions of administration, are not permitted with, permitted, a permitted use within the city of East Bethel. That's the extent of our city ordinance. The definition of an accessory storage container is found in Appendix A, zoning section one, under definitions. An accessory storage container, a container placed outdoors and used for storage of goods, materials, or merchandise that is used in connection with the lawful, principal, or accessory use of the lot. The term accessory storage container includes but is not limited to containers such as boxcars, semi-trailers, roll-off containers, slide-off containers, railroad cars, hickey-back containers, and portable moving and storage containers. The term accessory storage container does not include a garage, a barn, a storage shed accessory to a dwelling provided such structure is not the type designed, equipped, or customarily used for over-the-road transportation of goods, materials, or merchandise. Per city ordinance, staff have reviewed the proposed amendment and are supportive of amending our existing ordinance. A staff recommendation is that the general regulations applicable to a detached accessory structure as defined in section fourteen subsection two should be considered or included. That's attachment five. The planning commission reviewed the amendment proposal at its August twenty-second meeting. At the conclusion of its review, which included a lengthy discussion, the planning commission made a recommendation by a four-to-three vote that the city council consider approval of the proposed amendment with the inclusion of a five-acre minimum lot size requirement, a minimum of a class-five or cement pad base required for storage containers to meet the zoning setback regulations as contained in section fourteen of detached accessory structures. It should be noted that the additions recommended by the planning commission do conflict with language in the original amendment proposal, which is also included in the approval from the planning commission. Additional modifications to the planning commission's recommendation would be necessary to clarify that conflict. The city council is requested to hold a public hearing, review the staff and the planning commission's recommendation, and approve, deny, or modify the proposed ordinance amendment as presented in, presented in ordinance draft twenty-twenty-three dash eighteen. Twenty-twenty-three dash eighteen is written as was proposed by Councilman Miller without the planning commission's recommendations as they are in conflict. We would need to come to some conclusion and then post a summary draft of the ordinance for, for public view.
And then another public hearing?
We wouldn't have to do another public hearing if we come up with a summary ordinance tonight.
The only question I had on the resolution was it didn't mention the five-acre minimum.
Correct.
Is that where the point of conflict is?
Yes, correct.
All right. So do we want to open our public hearing right now? Okay, we'll open the public hearing on the proposed ordinance amendment twenty-twenty-three dash eighteen. Anybody who would like to comment about it? Hi.
Mike DeRita-Bildgen, two-three-six-zero, there are good history for the east. And we would be really good with just leaving it, no storage containers, but at a bare minimum, those minimum acreage requirements and some screening and, yeah, put some more, not just, yeah, sure, put your container in the backyard.
So the way the planning commission amended it is, would be helpful in your opinion?
And agricultural would be fine too.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a use there, but there's a lot of people with small lots around here and they really don't have a place to put where it's out of sight of everybody else in the neighborhood. They aren't the prettiest things, I don't care what it is. They aren't pretty. They don't really belong in residential area.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment about it?
Hi, Julie DeWitt, two-two-eight-seven-nine, Staples Street. For a storage container, I think it should be, the minimum acreage should not be five. With that being said, I'm talking about for people with two acres, you can have up to three storage.
Accessory structures.
Accessory structures.
That are not storage containers?
So if you, how, how are you going to justify three accessory structures versus one storage container? Or how are you doing that? Is that going to be an added accessory structure then? So you, so that would be part of the three or?
I'm going to refer your question to the gentleman with the beard right over there. Aaron, you can speak to it better.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I mean, storage containers are not cheap.
So, yeah, to answer your question, Mr. Whit, storage containers under the proposed amendment would not be considered a detached accessory structure. They would just be a simple storage container in and of itself. There was no request or nothing in the proposal to utilize that as another storage container or going against the zoning numbers or anything like that. So that is certainly something that could be addressed in a different version of the ordinance, but.
So it would be, you're entitled to three accessory structures and a storage unit?
As was, as was proposed, there is no prohibition for a storage container above and beyond the allowable detached accessory structures.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Aaron.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, or we'll close the public hearing on it? Okay, we'll close it. Does anybody have an inkling to make a motion one way or the other?
I'll move to open up the discussion of.
You'll move, so I have to.
Twenty-twenty-three sixty-three.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second. Well, yeah. I guess the five acres, in East Bethel, if you, if you don't have enough property, you can't build a big enough shed to put your stuff in. Well, this is going to give people something they can put their stuff in tractors, tillers, whatever. Because people complain, well, I don't want to see it in their yard. But you're not giving necessarily, not, not everybody can afford to build a wooden shed. I mean, let's face it, wood's gone up. And to put a storage container and say, well, you got to have five acres, well, that would eliminate anybody on Coon Lake. And if there were some stipulations, you know, some people mentioned it has to be the same color as the house. I don't care, paint it. But they are secure, they're waterproof. I don't know what different sizes there are, but I didn't necessarily care for the five-acre minimum. I just. I mean, you know, if you want people to get the stuff out of the yard, then give them, give them a place to put it.
I agree with that. The thing is, this, this ordinance isn't coming directly from me. It's coming from residents who I talked to personally prior to being elected and after sitting up here. Do I want to run out and get one? I'm, I'm not, I have no interest in getting one. But just because I don't have interest in something does not mean that the residents and their interest in it ends right there. Doing the research on storage containers, I myself found out a lot about them that I didn't know. I didn't know that they were basically rated the last twenty-five years. Whereas a storage shed from Menards, for example, they're rated for ten years. I didn't realize they were insect and basically mouse-proof because of how they're constructed. And if anybody has a shed or has any motorized vehicles parked out there during the winter, find out that wires and little mouse houses can be made in all of them. I've experienced that firsthand. They're basically fire-retardant, flames don't affect them, which is great for peace of mind. Storage companies use them all over for storing their tools and their materials in a safe manner. And you have to take a step back, as I did, and said, if I was one of these residents asking for one of these storage containers, or why can't I use one? If I have the appropriate land and the place to put it. Thus, we came up with the ordinance. I'm not fond of the five-acre thing. I'm, I'm hoping that people understand they're not just going to put it in their backyard in the middle of the yard and they have some thought process with this. They take this ordinance very lightly, or not lightly, they, they take it serious and they want to make it a part of their house, what they're looking at. They, they want to basically make it look good. I mean, not all graffiti'd up. When it comes to value, I was asked about property values. Well, these things hold their values and they hold them very well. There's not too many people out there who are going to say, I'm selling my house, anybody want a free container? And it's going to be left there. I guarantee you it's going to be gone by the end of the day because people want these things. What it boils down to is we have an ordinance now that doesn't allow us to do this. What this is, is going to free our residents up to basically use their own properties the way they see fit. That's why they moved out here, they have the land to do it. I'm all for the recommendation of either a concrete or a class-five. I think that's smart. I don't know anybody who would put one on their property out in dirt and just let it sit there and sink. You know, these things are heavy, they're built to hold sixty-two thousand pounds. They've got one-inch floors. It's just amazing what they can do. And you can stack them six high. Now, I'm not saying we're going to stack them six high, but when you talk about safety for the residents and having a workshop and something hard to get into that is safe, I don't think you can, you can touch anything, you know, safe for your own personal use and your own personal stuff. That's where that ordinance came from. That's what the residents asked. As a matter of fact, last meeting we had, Councilman Smith and I were approached after the meeting by a resident who basically said, when are we going to be able to use our property? I've had two of my neighbors move because they can't store their equipment and the stuff that they have around their property in a safe place. Drive around, you're going to look at a lot of lawn ornament, lawn art that's out there that could be cleaned up very easily. So that's the background behind this ordinance.
I think we have to be careful when we're discussing this because in the conversations I hear on a lot of the commissions is, I don't like this. I don't want to see it. I don't want this or that. I don't think that's appropriate. Because you're supposed to represent everybody. And you saying that because you don't like it, nobody else should, I don't think that's right. I just, it's my opinion.
I agree with Bob's thought. There was a lot of that, I don't like this, I don't like that. And that came from the planning commission meeting last Tuesday. And Bob's right and I agree. Residents have spoken to us. They want us, they want to be able to store their stuff. And to me, it makes sense what Tim has came up with. He's researched it all over the place and it sounds like a great thing. I don't agree with the five acres either. It should be less. And that's what I got.
The public hearing has been closed. And so this is for the council to discuss. Thank you.
Someone want to call the question?
Well, putting my two cents in on this.
Good.
I do not agree with this ordinance. I believe it will open up a Pandora's Box of issues. But saying that, addressing the ordinance, I believe it is incomplete when.
you're putting together an ordinance, you have to look at it three different ways, for the people that want it, for the people that don't want it, and how will the city enforce it? And it's important to address as many factors as you can when you're coming up with the new ordinance, because things are not retroactive with ordinances. If this ordinance is passed tonight, and in the next six months, it's found that there's lots of issues, you can change the ordinance, but everything that's happened in the last six months has been grandfathered in. So, with saying that, the, the areas or questions that I would come up with is, should these be licensed by the city? Should a permit be gotten before a person places one?
Like an interim use permit, or?
No, just essentially like a building permit, but, so that it's ensured that the structure, container complies with the ordinance. As far as placement, that'll meet all the setbacks, just like an accessory structure. Will it need to be inspected once it's placed? Minimum lot sizes. Five has been thrown out there. Oak Grove has a seven acre minimum. Screening requirements, what kind of screening requirements? Max containers, Oak Grove has a max of two containers. What kind of usage would be allowed with them for either personal or commercial or home-based? What condition is it in to, and how can we sure that they stay in good conditions, that they don't deteriorate, that they stay rust-free? In our, the definition, section zero-one, we have includes but is not limited to boxcars, semi-trailers, roll-off containers, railroad cars. Is this just for storage containers, or are we allowing semi-trailers as well?
Specifically, actually, the general term form is shipping containers. I used thousands of these when I was in agrivision.
And that's something that should be addressed, and it's also a storage versus cargo versus shipping container, 'cause there's different attributes to all of those. What are we specifically allowing?
For example, it doesn't have wheels.
Could be. Number two, under B, the storage container shall comply with other applicable city ordinances and regulations. Which one specifically? No signs, logos. Is there stipulation when they are to be removed, to allow them on rental properties? 'Cause researching on this, there's been issues with renters bringing them in, and then not paying rent, and then now what do, what does the renter do? Should these be acre to the ground? Do we need a foundation? Do we need a concrete pad under them? How does this affect the impervious surfaces of a area? Does this, and Aaron brought this up as well, does this count towards any other accessory structure? How do we ensure that this does not adversely affect any adjoining properties? Any properties that have high traffic versus low-traffic areas for visibility, how will it affect those? Are modifications allowed to them? Because modifying them can alter them, and new engineering may be needed for them, because all of these are engineered. What portions of section fourteen apply? Section fourteen is the detached accessory structures. Will these be allowed before principal structure? And those are just concerns I came up with in about half an hour.
Well, I'm kinda wondering where all these concerns have been since the original concept was presented in May, in April.
It was presented in May, end of April.
All of a sudden, it comes time for the public hearing, and there's a list, and again, you can't plan for everything that's gonna go wrong. I mean, we'd never do anything. You know, if it, you do it and it doesn't work, well, then you tweak it. But to constantly say, no, we're not gonna do this, no, 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 we're not gonna do that. If, if it's not affecting public safety and public health, and it's not an imminent danger to anyone right now, all that stuff that are in people's yards, they're gonna get citations if they don't get it out, because it's visible. Give them somewhere to put it. And again, you know what my question, why are all these concerns coming out now? There's been plenty of time to email staff and say, Aaron, what do you think of this? Aaron, hey, Jack, what do you think of that? Now it comes to the point where it's at the public hearing, and it's kinda like you wanna start over from day one, and I'm, I'm not for it.
These questions, I've only gone because council has not addressed this before. It has not gone to this point for council to address it.
We've been discussing the open, or the container issue for quite a while.
It's not came before council.
And then it's been tabled, what's that?
It's not came before council.
Well, that's because it had to go before the planning commission, and they decided to table it two months in a row.
Yeah, they had full agendas.
Well, that, I'm not gonna get into it over that, but I disagree with that.
But...
'Cause I was at the planning commission meetings when...
It's an interesting thing that you brought this up, Brian, because a note that I made on this topic was, we discussed the need to improve effectiveness of reasonable, consistent code enforcement. And we, we said we, that's something we needed to discuss, and so far, we haven't. And it relates to this issue, 'cause it's a matter of code enforcement, how do you, how do you enforce the code? And this is, I mean, this is the balancing act that we have to do every week. Is you don't want to constrain the residents so that they don't have quiet enjoyment of their property. On the other hand, you don't want, you know, people do whatever they want, and with consequence. But you know, you know what the logical extension of this is? Is we have to call a community committee to decide what house color you're allowed to, what stain you can put on your own, or how you should paint your dining room or something. I mean, that's ridiculous. But that's, that, at what point do you draw back from trying to prevent things that have a one-in-one-millionth chance of happening to begin with? Or a one-in-ten-thousandth, you know? Like Bob said, you can't prevent every possible negative outcome. On the other hand, you don't want it to where people are allowed to give zero regard for their neighbors, you know? That's, 'cause there are consequence, economic consequences. We know, we have someone with a shipping container right on our road across down the street from me. I know exactly what you're talking about. You know, it's a, and, and that's something that we deal with, and we know it has consequences. So I understand what you're saying, but that's the balancing act, we're, we're paid all these big bucks to resolve.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on to taking a vote, or whatever you guys do tonight, I do have some questions for clarification services to make this ordinance something that is workable. B-one is the storage container shall comply with all setback requirements as specified in the City of East Bethel zoning ordinance. Which setback requirements are we looking at? Are we looking at a residence? Are we looking at a septic system? Are we looking at the setback requirements for garage? Are we looking at the setback requirements for a detached accessory structure?
All the time you guys of the planning commission took to deal with this, and you didn't resolve it. I'm just giving you a hard time, Aaron.
So, that's how, that's how these things become so complicated.
Yeah, you need specificity.
It needs specificity.
Yeah, I understand.
Number, number two, the storage container shall comply with all other applicable city ordinances and regulations. That's very vague. What I might find is needing compliance, the next guy might not, because of the vagueness of it. So, my recommendation or suggestion would have been, make the storage container included in the definition of a detached accessory structure. And now you have everything already set for setbacks, you have everything set for...
So in response to the question that you brought up, Julie, it becomes one of the three allowable?
Correct. But then you also have defined how close can a detached accessory structure be to the septic system? How can, close can it be to the rear property line? It can't be located in the front of the property, it has to be located behind the front line of the house.
That's the way I took the planning commission's discussion of it, really. Correct or incorrect, that's how I took it.
So, and that was my suggestion as a staff member for the general regulations of a detached accessory structure should be applicable to the storage container.
What do you guys think about that?
I think we go with what Tim originally came with, we've been wrestling with this for all along.
What are your thoughts, Brian?
I say take the time to get it as good as you can before we pass it. That we do all the but-if tests. That, that, yes, you can't plan for everything, but some of these things that are right in front of us, so the major ones, let's figure them out. Get the storage versus cargo versus shipping definition. As defined in section oh-one, are we allowing semi-trailers as part of these? Anchor to the ground, foundation, concrete, should they apply with what standards for setbacks? Those are reasonable things, should these be licensed or permitted? Should they be inspected? To ensure that they are complying?
Well, again, I feel like it's being stonewalled. And I say that because there's been more than ample opportunity to discuss this and make the changes that were necessary in whatever reason. To wait until the last minute, I don't, I, I don't, I don't understand.
This is the first time council has discussed this.
Well, then the planning commission should have taken care of it.
Well, the planning commission doesn't, didn't have all these questions.
Well, a lot of the, a lot of those questions were at the planning commission.
It's been on the agenda on the planning commission several times. So, I mean, all they have to do is read their packet, and they could have seen all these stuff, you know, that's, Mr. Miller here is listed. Everybody had the information since May of that. So that should have been enough time to have questions.
Mayor, council members, maybe I could offer a suggestion, obviously you could...
Please do.
Except or reject that you'd even fit. And, and I could be reading the council incorrectly, but if I'm reading the council somewhat correctly, there seemed to be at least somewhat of a resonance positively with what Aaron Berg was saying, is, is if we map storage container and accessory together as far as setbacks, so they have the same type of setbacks, that would work. If we also wanna make sure that you do not have all of a sudden a myriad of various, you know, structures in addition to a primary resident, also putting those two concepts together, that would work, and...
Sure you're saying a better definition of a shipping container or storage?
Right, right. And, and what I'm getting at is, if I'm reading things correctly, what you could do is, you could move to approve with directing staff, albeit probably if you're Mr. Berg, to essentially bring language to your next council that is in conformance with what you have passed as far as an accessory structure. And then you can adopt that new language. Or if you need to tweak it at that point, but at least then you would have language before you that would have accessory structure and storage together, setbacks there, meeting those. And I also heard, I'm, I'm sorry, the impervious service add that language as far as, you know, base five and so forth. So that way you would have that, those three things before you, the language there, and you can adopt it at your next meeting.
What do you guys think of that?
If we do that, I think I'd want Mr. Miller involved with it. I don't want staff just making the decisions on their own. He's been working on this the whole time, so his knowledge is a lot farther than mine on it.
That makes sense to me, you would direct staff to work with Councilmember Miller.
I'm good with that.
Does anyone wanna make a motion that we approve the resolution subject, as Eric explained?
I just think we've been stonewalling it.
I understand, and I do feel the same way. I was, I was expressive about the planning commission's need to move on it, and I stand by it. So, I get where you're coming from, and the the ultimate goal is to do it and do it right, like Brian's saying, it is, you know, you wanna do it correctly as possible, given what we know right now.
But has anything ever done perfectly fine the first time?
No, nothing in the...
If you don't try something, you don't know what's gonna happen.
Nothing in all of human history was ever done perfectly. So, we can eliminate that, except maybe the Sistine Chapel, that's pretty close.
You're always gonna have negatives about whatever, but you can't sit there and decide on
Yeah, you can't, you can't be...
This could happen, that could happen.
They call it the paralysis of analysis.
Exactly.
You can't be hidebound by every possible concern, no.
I think attaching it to the detached structure ordinances is just gonna create more issues. It's basically gonna tell people the same thing that they're already hearing.
Yeah, I don't really get that.
Well, everybody's gotta vote.
Yeah, yeah, we're not.
Now call the question.
Okay, Bob calls the question.
So you don't actually have a resolution in front of you, you have an actual ordinance proposal amendment. So, if you wanna direct staff to change something, that's fine, but there isn't...
I'm gonna ask the city attorney to restate it.
There's no resolution, it's an ordinance, it's a draft ordinance.
You could just make a motion to direct staff to revise said ordinance.
Okay.
That'd be simple enough.
For our next meeting, next regular meeting of the city council, which will be the eleventh. I misspoke earlier today, Jack, when I said the eleventh, I meant the fourth. That meeting we didn't need to have, but the eleventh we do, yeah. I knew I didn't have to call you and tell you, 'cause I knew you knew it, so... All right, well, do we understand what the resolution is? Directing staff to revise this, the current version of the resolution, or the ordinance, I should say?
Again.
Again.
With the...
Are we clear about it?
With the direction of Mr. Miller.
Yeah, and that Mr. Miller should be included in the process.
Not a problem.
Done.
Is that good?
Was that a motion?
You had a motion and a second, you'll need to make a voice, voice vote?
Voice vote on this? Sorry, I'm gonna have to get a drink of water. Oh, you're frozen solid, 'cause Jack keeps turning the temperature in here. I'm wearing a T-shirt, and I'm turning blue.
Oh, oh, I'll take the tie off.
I think just as a point of order, the motion and the second was just for discussion. I don't think we've actually had a motion for...
I, I heard a motion and a second to direct staff to provide a resolution with the ordinance as...
Okay.
And, and to work with Councilmember Miller. And with that, we need to...
So are we good to call a vote?
Yes.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So do we know who?
Three to two.
So as Bob and Brian voted nay, right? Okay. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Capstone Concept Plan. Good to see you again. Thanks for your patience. I'm sure you're used to it, you have to deal with city councils all the time, talking about whose dog killed whose cat and all that stuff. Anyway.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. On June twenty-first of twenty-twenty-three, the city council and the planning commission held a joint special meeting where Capstone Homes Incorporated presented a concept plan for a mixed-use plan unit residential redevelopment of the Viking Meadows Golf Course at seventeen-eighty-eight Viking Boulevard Northeast. eighty-eight Viking Boulevard Northeast. At the June twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting, public hearing was held and feedback was provided to the developer on a concept plan proposal. At the July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting, the concept plan proposal was presented to the city council for feedback. On August sixteenth of twenty twenty-three, the developer submitted a revised concept plan for a proposed, proposed plan unit development, which is attached for your review, uh, item number three. The property is located on a hundred and twenty-nine acres of land, which spans across the zoning classifications of mixed use and single-family residential. The proposal shows that of the ninety-five acres, which are developable, sixty-nine acres will contain a proposed two-hundred-and-fifty-two lots. In addition, the amended proposal contains sixty acres of open space, which include a eight-point-one acre park and recreation space. This revised concept plan removes the rural residential thirty-acre parcel south of a hundred-and-eighty-ninth Avenue Northeast from the plan. Adjustments made across the entire development have resulted in a decrease of ninety-eight individual lots. According to City Code, section forty-nine dash six of the development procedure, a mixed-use and single-use project, the application procedure and the applicable general requirements pertaining to a planned unit development shall apply to the mixed-use district, subject to any exceptions, modifications, or additions set forth in the ordinance. The application procedure shall include submittal and approval by the city council of a concept plan prior to the submittal of a planned unit development request. According to section sixty-six subdivisions, uh, article two, concept plan, concept plan review does not convey any legal developmental rights to the applicant. Um, according to section fifty-six of a planned unit development, a planned unit development is required in a mixed-use district of the city. The mixed use allows for commercial residential parks and open space and as such are in compliance with the East Bethel Comprehensive Plan. The proposed, the proposed of a PUD is to allow for flexibility and variation from a conventional ordinance standard in exchange for higher standards of development, design, and creativity, architectural control, natural resource protection, landscaping, public parks, private and public open space protection, pedestrian access, multi-use corridor opportunities. The PUD provisions are also intended to promote the efficient, excuse me, the effective use of land and promote cost-effective public and private infrastructure systems. As part of the preliminary review, staff have offered the following comments. Ingress and egress to the development will be accessed from two locations, Viking Boulevard Northeast and Sand Hill Parkway Northeast. The original proposal contained a potential connection at a hundred-and-eighty-ninth Avenue. This is still being requested to be configured as an emergency-only access point. The city engineer, public works manager, and city staff are working in conjunction with the Anoka County Highway Department to evaluate overall traffic considerations of the area in response to concerns expressed during the first concept plan proposal. A traffic study will still be required. Uh, under open space, a primary function for a PUD is to encourage development that preserves and enhances the natural characteristics and valuable natural resources of a site and not force intense development that use all portions of a given site to arrive at a maximum intensity or allowable density. Capstone has proposed over sixty acres of open green space, which include, again, a eight-point-one acre park, uh, or community rec space with trails and unique landscape buffers. The park area has increased from the original one-acre park proposal. Streets and cul-de-sacs, along with utilities, shall be constructed in compliance with City Code, which require that all streets shall provide for future connections to adjoining un-divided, uh, unsubdivided land. Staff recommends that the streets be city-maintained public streets throughout the entire development. The amended plan consists of two-hundred-and-twenty-five new single-family homes, which is a reduction from the original three-hundred-and-fifty proposed. A combination of fifty-foot, seventy-foot, and eighty-foot lots are proposed, as opposed to the original forty-five-foot and sixty-five lots that were included in the original proposal. The plan indicates that new single-family homes will each be connected to city sewer and water as the entire development is within the Musa area. The plan consists of an overall density for the proposed developable land that is under three units per acre, which is the citywide density standard based on the twenty-fourty comprehensive plan for all properties in the Musa. The developer presented his concept plan at the Parks Commission meeting on August eighth. The Parks Commission was agreeable to a fifteen-hundred-dollar fee per lot, plus the eight-point-one acres of land. The developer has requested the cash be used for improvements in the active play area with the addition of the nature play facility. On a fiscal, uh, impact, the revised plan would generate a conservative estimate of two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-one-hundred dollars in annual property tax revenues at full build-out in twenty twenty-eight. The city would also collect one million four-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars in city SAC and WAC fees over the life of the project. This amount would pay off approximately seventy percent of the principal balance of the Met Reserve Capacity Loan. In addition, the increase in housing units would improve the demographics of the local market area in which are needed to attract basic retail food and grocery services to the city. The planning commission, by a six-to-one vote, made a recommendation of approval of the amended concept plan to the city council at its August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three meeting. Staff's recommendation is that city council consider approval of the amended concept plan as exhibited in attachment three by resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one, a resolution approving the concept plan of the Viking Meadows. The developer is here if you have any questions.
Aaron, I got a question, uh, on housing on page thirty-five. I don't know if you misspoke, I thought I heard you say two-hundred-and-twenty-five houses?
Two-hundred-and-fifty-two, if I misspoke.
That's what I thought.
It is two-hundred-and-fifty-two.
All right.
Sorry about that.
That's what I thought, okay, thanks.
If you'd like, I can pull up some images of the amended proposal. They are included in the packet.
Where's the commercial on here? Isn't this mixed use?
So, so mixed use allows for the flexibility of including commercial, um, single-family, multifamily. It allows you as the governing body to decide the makeup of the mixed, of the, the planned unit development in the mixed-use district. The, um, the developer can speak better to the portion of land that's left over for commercial space in the upper northwest corner of the, um, area that's outside of their actual development, but they could better explain the connection to commercial on that.
So is mixed use saying you can do or you will do?
You can. It allows for flexibility.
So on that frontage road the city put in, what did we spend, three million on that? Sand Hill? We're on Sand Hill there?
Correct.
There's gonna be no retail or anything? Don't, don't, doesn't the city make more from retail connections with WAC and SAC and for property taxes if it would be along that, that section right there, if that was?
We make more on property taxes. Commercial is essentially taxed twice the rate residential is. There's no telling what the SAC and WAC charge will be depending on the use. If it's a high-water user, we do collect quite a few, but generally the higher residential properties produce more. In the elevage project, there's five acres of an outlot that's slated for commercial use. Uh, again, the market is gonna determine what will be successful there. The elevage project is better suited and better located than the Capstone project. There's probably little, if any, property within the Capstone boundary that's suitable for commercial use, with the exception of that one site that Aaron mentioned, which is in the northwest corner, but it's properties that the golf course is gonna retain ownership of. I don't know if this is the right time to ask this question or not. Um, so the park commission was agreeable to the fifteen-hundred per lot and one point, or eight-point-one acres of land. How was that number determined?
The, the per-unit value?
Well, I just said the park commission was agreeable to the fifteen-hundred per lot and eight-point-one acres of land.
Yeah, so.
But how did the fifteen-hundred, where'd that come from?
That is in our, our procedure and our ordinance and the new process that was put in and, uh, Jack helped me out, January, uh.
That, that, that's correct. Our park dedication fee formula was changed. It was ten percent of the property value prior to development, but we looked and we decided to go to a per-lot requirement because the other formula wasn't meeting our needs for parks development and acquisition and improvements. So it was changed from the ten percent of appraised value prior to development, essentially the raw land, and went to fifteen-hundred dollars per lot on this type of development. In a rural residential subdivision, it was two thousand dollars per lot. Okay, the developer has requested the cash be used for the improvements to the active play area and addition of nature play facility. Where's that going? Or what is it? I guess a better question.
Uh, on, on your map here, where my cursor is, um, circling right now or hovering, that is the one-acre park, however, there are trails throughout. They've dedicated this space on this side for, um, some sort of park space. And the trails go all the way through the development to the south.
Do those two green portions add up to eight-point-one? Is that what, the eight-point-one comes from?
Let me, let me roll down to here. This is, this is the sixty-plus acres of open space that's gonna be left.
Yeah, that's a green space, yeah.
Yep. So you can see that the park is included in here.
Right.
As part of it, and then yes, that open space over here would, that combination would make the eight-point-one.
Cause that's one question I had, I, I'm probably mistaken on this number, but I thought the number for park dedication fees was probably one that was three-hundred-and-fifty? Maybe not, I don't know. But it was something like three-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars. And I thought, how could you use that amount of money just in those parks, you know? Unless you're putting in platinum jungle gym or something like that, you know, it's seemed like a lot of money to.
You know, and, and depending on what the final design is, these parks construction projects are just like anything else, they're very expensive. But it would really depend on the final design, what the final cost was. And in, in this case, I'm assuming that if the final cost was less than what the park's dedication fee was, the remaining.
Difference would be in cash.
In our parks acquisition and development fund.
Yeah.
Well, again, uh, said for the improvements to the active play area with addition nature play facility. So this nature play facility, is that a building or are we just talking a playground or what? Is that, is that, could, could you come up for a sec? I missed on some of this when it first started, cause I wasn't on the council.
Absolutely, thank you, uh, mayor and council members. The, going back to the park meetings, uh, as I understand it, and, um, staff, if you wanna jump in on this, typically for your park dedication, there's one of two options the developer is asked to.
Okay.
Either contribute land, which, um, or they're asked to contribute dollars. And in this case, we looked at the option of doing both.
Okay.
And that's what we presented to the park committee. Uh, we suggested not only would we pay the park fee of fifteen-hundred dollars per lot, we also have this space that we think would work really well, and this came from a conversation with staff as well, uh, that could be designated as park, given to the city for park use. And as a part of that, doing both of the typical paths, so both fee and land.
Mm-hmm.
The goal was to see that park space, that one-acre active play area be improved with, um, with, uh, what we've called a nature play facility. And we presented that facility, uh, to the park commission to consider what that looks like. It's a great resource to any community, an active community. We've got it in our communities in Ramsey and we offered to share that to the park board and, and we'd welcome your, your visit as well. It's a great amenity for a neighborhood, for any community that's looking for a great place for the community to come together. And as was mentioned, the eight-point-one acres, uh, if our plan still is up there, it's not just to our community, uh, as we've been working through the concept, there are connections, so there, there's our, uh, that isn't Ramsey, that's our active play area. So it's a great, uh, design that was done here locally, locally sourced materials, a play for, uh, walking bridges, some great, great ways for kids to interact on more na- natural-based, um, perimeter. So this new city park space, the eight-point-one acres, does actually connect to the surrounding communities as well, so there's walkability, not only through what we're proposing for the community here at Viking Meadows, but also into, uh, elevage to get to some of the other commercial areas, whatever may come with some of those commercial development areas.
All right.
Hey Matt, I got a question on your open space. When you take the green space that Aaron just had up and you overlay it with the ponds, it appears you're creating ponds and wetlands areas. Is that, is that what we're doing here or?
No, the ponds are avoiding the wetland areas. There is a wetland delineation that was completed for the property, so, uh, on the concept, it, it is somewhat dashed out in the concept. It does show where the wetland structures are throughout the entire community, um, somewhat see it here as it kinda has dashed through areas where will impact the wetlands or other areas where they're actually completely defined. The ponds themselves are stormwater ponds and they can't interact with the wetlands in that way, so they're avoiding the women, excuse me, the wetlands in their, in their design.
I think what, I think what the drawing depicts that's displayed on the screen is the fact that this isn't gonna be a hundred-and-sixty acres of house after house after house. There's a lot of breaks and separation between, breaks some of the densities up and gives this the figling and appearance of a much lower density development, even though we're still at, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-two units. Some, some of the ponds are necessary too, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, for excavation, for some material, to do some soil correction and site work on the site to bring some elevations up. But again, what he's saying too is where there's wetlands, those will not be disturbed, the ponds will be created on areas that aren't wetlands.
Is that like considering creating our own wetlands there?
No, those wouldn't be considered wetlands. I mean, you can go into the creation of wetlands, but you have to go through a real lengthy process with the D and R, and, uh, some of those are pretty restrictive. And if they fail, then you gotta replace them somewhere else, so it's something you really don't wanna get into. Aaron, was there an ecological impact statement done on this project?
Not yet.
Oh, that's, so that's?
That could be potentially part of, uh, the statutory requirements based on units and area and those kind of things, so.
Okay.
Um, we would probably defer to the city engineer to make those recommendations of additional items other than what statute requires.
Have they done pinging to find out just how good of a base is down there, being that it's on the golf course and it gets a little wet?
Yeah, thank you for the question, mayor and council members. There has been, uh, actually a phase one, uh, environmental study completed on the property and we've done extensive geological testing to determine depths of soils and, and materials. And that does, uh, answer Jack's comment. We, we do have some corrections that we know are gonna be half, have to be made on the entirety of the community.
Mm-hmm.
So some of those ponds you see as we're creating stormwater ponds, we're, we're moving that material to raise the site to make sure that the, the site is draining properly, that everything is, is conditioned properly. Lot of work on our engineers to, to make that balance work.
Yeah, a little bit.
I have two questions. One is, it mentions, uh, in the cover sheet, a concept plan review does not convey any legal development rights to the applicant. What about a concept plan approval? Does that convey developmental rights?
So, until we reach the preliminary plat stage, just because we potentially approve a concept plan tonight, doesn't mean they could put a shovel in the ground tomorrow. This is only giving them the acknowledgement of the local unit that the plan that they've proposed is something that is desirable to the community, would fit within the guidelines, fits within the comp plan, that, that you understand that they will now have to bring a preliminary plat to meet those guidelines.
Right.
Which would give you final approval, which then would convey some legal authority to the developer at that point.
Right. In other words, we're essentially just given the.
In other words, we're essentially just given the developer, developer feedback. And at the end, if we say, yes, we like it, you can go ahead, then they know that they have a, probably a safe investment that they can go ahead and spend large amounts of money to do a preliminary plat. Uh, would that be correct, Aaron?
Yes, and that's also gonna assist us with kicking off the hiring of some, an engineering firm to do the traffic study, to start requesting those environmental assessments, uh, getting approval letters from the core that, uh, Capstone has already gotten to show, to compile all those reports to show that this impact, what this develop, impact might have on the community.
All right.
And, and again, that gives them the assurance that they can perceive with the anticipation as long as their preliminary plat essentially overlays what they're presenting here is what the council is looking for and gives them the assurance to go ahead and continue with their planning, engineering to get to that stage.
So it's in no way a rubber stamp of, we like this, so we're gonna like the preliminary and we're gonna like the final. It's just simple feedback and good direction.
And understand that we still would move into the planned unit development phase of things and define other parameters above and beyond what's coming in, in the preliminary plat. That's part of the, the process. So, um, we can refine the aesthetics, the look, the volume, those kind of things, um, to some degree once we get to that stage.
Okay, uh, my other question was, according to this, you have sixty-nine developable acres with two hundred and fifty-two homes on it, which equates to three point six five homes per acre. Unless I've got a bad calculator.
Calculations.
But that's, but that's, that's what I came up with. And originally, I think it was, and this is, I'm probably wrong about this, but when it was three hundred and fifty homes, I thought it was a hundred and twenty net developable acres, and that was two point nine two homes per acre. So it's actually, the, this version is actually, even with the setbacks adjustments and the lot, five, five feet of, you know, additional width on the lots and stuff, it's actually denser than the previous version.
Yeah, the, the previous version, the calculation was ba- based on, on total acreage.
Total acres.
Correct. And if we were to base this on the total a hundred and twenty, um, acres divided, you know, our two hundred and fifty-two units divided by that, the, the actual density is, I think, one point nine or somewhere in that. It's, it's, it's much lower. Or, uh, I don't have my calculator in front of me to give you that total, but.
The, the fact is it's, it's dense. I mean, we've seen your development down in Blaine and stuff. And it, you know, for, for, for East Bethel purposes, it's, it's dense, you know? It's not an illusion or something. Uh, if, if it had been at the two hundred and ninety-two homes per acre, it would be a total of two hundred and two homes on sixty-nine acres. So that's just, this, what I was looking at is, um, it i- it is a dense development. You know, you're talking twenty feet between homes on average, right?
Yeah, if I can speak to our changes in the plan, originally there was three hundred and fifty homes proposed on a hundred and sixty acres. We've, we have eliminated almost a hundred homes from that plan. Part of that was about fifty homes that were removed.
Right, on the thirty acres, yeah.
But the rest of that was removed when we went from where we originally were seeking flexibility with our smaller, um, lot sizes. Now we're just following R one and R two standard to meet, meet the city's current code.
Right.
So our density is, is a hundred percent established on what you're requiring in your code. So we're, we're not seeking any flexibility and, and, um, and we believe that is taking the advice that was given to us by council, by, by the council members to, to meet what the city has, to get that density to be a little bit more friendly to East Bethel.
Matt, these ponds, there seem to be several of those. Are they always gonna have water in them?
That's a good question. So you do have a ditch that runs through here that appears to have water in it on a pretty regular basis. Um, without really knowing the engineering and how deep those ponds really will have to be when we go through the process of calculations and stormwater, um, I, I just don't know. I do know that we do see water in several of the ponds that are in the golf course right now. And, uh, we anticipate that there will continue to be water in the ponds that, that we put forward.
Okay, cause the, the reason for my question is that the water, if there's gonna be water in these ponds, they're gonna be stagnant sitting there. Do you guys have anything like a fountain that you're thinking you could put in there to keep the water moving so it doesn't get stale? Is there anything to do, I mean, otherwise, some of that water can get pretty nasty? And I guess, is there gonna be an HOA involved with this?
Yeah, and, uh, so speaking of your first question, I don't know that I have an answer for you right now, but I'd love to research that a little bit. Um, stormwater ponds and ponds are very prevalent in our state for sure. And, and especially here in this, this area where the wetlands are very similar in, in nature. So, um, going to the HOA question though, yes, there will be an HOA that's a part of the R two, um, standard that you have, is that there'd be a common area homeowners association.
Okay, yeah, cause I appreciate you checking on, cause I mean, just a fountain in there would keep that for being, I mean, if the houses are gonna be in there and they'll be in there close, people are gonna be going, boy, that stinks around here. You know what I mean?
This is, this is an issue we're dealing with right now.
Yeah.
A number of places, yeah.
Just, if you can check into it, that'd be great.
Thank you, yep.
Did, did you say, what did you, I'm, I'm sorry, I was reading something. What did you say about the HOA?
There's gonna be.
Yeah.
What, what's the function of the HOA? What's the breadth of its scope or whatever you wanna call it?
So at this time, we do have some improved landscaping that are, that is associated with the, the neighborhood, the community as a whole. Um, we do have a half acre recreational green space that is gonna be retained as a part of the HOA, um, for just some recreational activity. And our, our larger entrances that we've talked about at both the Viking and Sanco Parkway. So both of those being irrigated, being landscaped, we've also proposed some, some sort of screening or some el- elements of design into the, the plan. And all of those would need to be cared for through a homeowners association. So that's the breadth of it is.
Like mowing of common areas or whatever too?
Yep, so some common area maintenance scenarios where we have those improvements for the community. Ma- mailboxes, you know, centralized mailboxes, sometimes it's easier for those to fall on an HOA. Uh, garbage service, one holler for the entire community, sometimes that's really precious. So we've looked at that too, that saves on wear and tear on the city's roads, having one holler instead of multiple. So there's some different elements in that HOA that we anticipate using.
And they, and the ponds would fall under that purview, wouldn't it?
It's, uh, great discussion for, uh, us to have a city exactly how that, that'll be structured.
Well, there, well, where we're at, and you correct me, Tim, he's the liaison for the Parks Commission. But, uh, we have somewhere around the order of a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty ponds in East Bethel. And the city is not in the pond maintenance business. Cause that's, that's so, that's one door we don't want to open, you know?
I'd be happy to come back to the discussion. We have another one standing for the stormwater. Stormwater ponds have a lot of breadth to them in terms of engineering and how they're managed and maintained moving forward. So I'd be happy to bring an answer back on that.
Anything else, guys?
Yeah, Matt, I have one more question. On the, on the east side there, is there gonna be any kind of a buffer between the development and all that private residential land that runs across there? Or are we just gonna be right up to the property line and boom?
Uh, our design right now does have a little bit of space included in there, plus some additional wetlands that really push us in some different areas. So there are some areas where that will be the case. Uh, otherwise, when we're not, uh, presented with that buffering option, then we would follow the setback standards that are in place.
And what is the setback standard in that particular po- location?
Well, that.
Ten feet?
This, R, R one down in the south, uh, I apologize, I don't have a code in front of me right now.
Well, Aaron knows everything, so. How's that?
I have, I have a nice handy chart that hangs on my wall.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet, okay.
Your yard. But if you'll, if you'll notice, that's only affecting those two larger ten acre properties, both of which are sent back a great distance from that cul-de-sac at the end of a hundred and eighty-ninth.
If you were to also overlay the wetlands on that, you would see that majority of that is all wetlands uh, on both of those property lines, uh, on the east and also the south, the, the northern property line and the southern parcel.
Then I think the other issue with the setbacks regarding those properties on a hundred and eighty-ninth, and that's been addressed by making that only an emergency access point. So there would be no additional traffic there. And then the removal of that thirty acres that was outside the musa will not have any properties backing up to that.
Anything else, guys? I should, excuse me, I should say, any further discussion?
I'm owed a proof resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three, Capstone. Plan of Viking Meadows.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion of the matter? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Thank you, Matt. Next item on our agenda is the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget discussion.
Thank you, Kevin. We'll give Mike here just a second to get set up, but I'll go over just a brief report on where we are. On July fifth, twenty twenty-three, city department heads presented their department budgets to city council for discussion. Then on August the seventh, two thousand twenty-three, Paul Lenzmeyer from the Anoka County Sheriff's Department presented the twenty twenty-four law enforcement contract, reviewed the contract proposal and explained some of the increases in that proposal. On August the fourteenth, the city council discussed allocating the one-time public safety aid of five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to the twenty twenty-four law enforcement contract to address the budget increase and indicate that these funds can only be used for public safety related expenditures in the city's contract with Anoka County for law enforcement services and eligible use for these funds. The final amount for these funds will be certified by the Minnesota Department of Revenue by September first, twenty twenty-three, with the actual funding dispersment occurring on December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. City has a fund balance policy that states that the city will maintain an unassigned fund balance in the general fund of at least forty percent of next year's budgeted expenditures. In practice, the city has historically maintained and targeted fifty percent of next year's budget expenditures to ensure the general fund has adequate cash flow in order to meet our operational needs. The city ended twenty twenty-two with a general fund balance of three million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Given this amount, estimates for the twenty twenty-three general fund financial performance and the proposed twenty twenty-four expenditure budget for the city could use three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars in fund balance to increase the twenty twenty-four expenditures in order to keep the levy flat for twenty twenty-four and still be over the targeted fifty percent fund balance goal. We've presented several different levy options in the packet for you relating to anywhere from a zero levy in, percent increase to five point five percent levy increase. We want to keep in mind too, that the use of fund balances and/or the one-time use of grant funds will establish a revenue amount for the following year that will have to be matched in order to, to avoid a significant levy increase in subsequent years. So what we may want to do to address this is do this in an incremental basis. So we don't have a year where there's a huge levy increase to amount for this hole on the revenue side of the budget. Uh, the remaining schedule for discussion and consideration of the twenty twenty-four budget is tentatively set as a meeting on September eleventh for the consideration of preliminary budget and levy, and then on December the eleventh for the consideration of the final budget levy. Additional meetings can be held during any, any of these intervals as required. Keep in mind too, that once the preliminary budget is set, it can be reduced but not increased. Uh, city council's request to propose any further changes to the draft preliminary twenty twenty-four budget and provide direction to staff regarding any adjustments to be made in that attached budget proposal. So at this time, we're gonna open it for discussion and direction from you if you have any questions regarding where we are and to give some final direction as to where you would like the levy for twenty twenty-four to be.
You guys need a prompt? Anybody have questions, discussion? So in the interest of full disclosure, Mike, Jack and I met on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, to go over this very topic, just to let you know. And that's where we kind of came up with the, uh, one point five to two percent levy change. The i- idea being that the residents can understand in a time of inflation that there are some cost increases, particularly as, as we'll communicate to them from the sheriff's department. But by the same token, we want to be prudent, as you just said, and not use up the surplus more than we need to. Earlier today, I did get good news, I guess. Uh, and that is that that five hundred and fifteen thousand is not constrained to being pay, pay, uh, used in the one year. It could be used in more than one year. So that gives us some flexibility there too.
And, and, and again, that, that the increase that Kevin mentioned does address the fact that we can address this problem of a potential revenue hole incrementally and keep levy increases in the future to a very low and controllable level, one that can be more easily absorbed in a double-digit increase. Like some cities around us have used some of their surplus funds for a number of years. And then all of a sudden, they've had to do a ten to fifteen percent levy increase.
Yeah.
I'd be comfortable with the two percent levy increase.
And it'll probably be about one point six really, huh? Which I think is pretty, pretty tolerable in a time of three to seven percent inflation, depending on whose numbers you're looking at.
Yeah, anything under, anything two and under is, for a city, you're doing good.
Pretty tolerable.
Versus other cities, Minneapolis, St. Paul increased fifteen percent and not to mention what the state did and.
Yeah.
Two percent under is good for me.
Any other comments, questions? We got Mike here, our financial expert.
I'll just kind of reiterate what, uh, Jack had mentioned. Essentially what we're trying to do is get some kind of consensus here as to what you want your preliminary budget to look like. Um, I think we've whittled it down to just this one issue now, what, what we want to use for that fund balance in order to, um, decrease the levy increase now for two thousand twenty-four. Again, without really jeopardizing or leaving the city vulnerable in future years. So I think the prudent thing to do, like Kevin and Brian are saying, is just really, um, uh, using up incrementally that, uh, fund balance as we go. So I think starting with that one point six to two percent, uh, increase is a good start for your preliminary budget. And if things change, we can always decrease it in the final budget. As far as the expenditure line items, are there any other further questions on those? Are we good with those moving into the preliminary budget?
I don't have any questions. You guys?
So if we set it to at least two percent, December, if we so choose, we can reduce it down to one point six or whatever it comes to.
Correct, yeah. So if the consensus is tonight to do two percent, then I would create that budget book at the two percent, whatever the fund balance use is. I would put that, plug that in. And again, if things change, anything changes from now until December eleventh, we can always reduce it down. The one thing, once we put it into the county in the preliminary stages, that's actually what's gonna show up on everybody's, um, preliminary tax statements that they get in November. So that's what they'll see. But then obviously we can reduce that down come December, so.
But at least that gives us, gives us a little bit of wiggle room if need be that something comes out of left field and.
Correct.
Sound good to you, Bob?
Sure.
Tim, Jim?
Sounds good. Yeah.
Okay. I guess that covers it.
So essentially, I'll create the budget book with that two percent total levy increase, and that's what we'll present at the September eleventh meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Sorry I had to wait so long.
No problem.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the public forum. And I guess I'll tap open the public forum. First person on our sheet here is Julie Dewitt.
I'm going to have Christine talk for me. As the last time I talked, it was hard for me because of my brain fog and stuff, so I wasn't able to complete.
More familiar with Christine?
Hi. Well, I just have a suggestion for you guys. I've never seen a city council where you do your public comment after all of that, because both times we've come here, we've waited a really long time. If you want to hear from your residents, they should probably be like right after the pledge allegiance, because sitting there for two hours is a bit much to ask. So what Julie Dewitt didn't get to say to you last time is that just because she has been through cancer treatments does not mean that she is physically well. As you know, the previous council in November of twenty twenty-one voted unanimously to leave them alone, not charge them, and readdress the issues. The concern comes is that they were never contacted. The next thing you know, they're in court. You mentioned this tonight, which I find interesting about how you selectively enforce. There was another gentleman at that meeting in November by the name of Don Worgen over there on the Coon Lake Beach area. He's actually living on a vacant property. There's a whole write-up in Nick Schmidt saying, there's no building, there's no home. I've been down in the county. There was a cabin there, nineteen thirty-six. At one point, that cabin was removed, because it's not in the aerial photos. And then all of a sudden, you see all kinds of buildings. Now, here's where I have concerns. You know, your city inspector says that Julie Dewitt's home is a threat to public safety, a substandard hazard for supposedly curled shingles, which we have asked for documentation. Julie can't get any documentation because she has an attorney. Julie does not have an attorney. She has a public defender. The public defender has put a motion into the courts in May asking the courts to specifically look at the equity in her home, to see if she even qualifies anymore. And I think that's really unfair, because she has no income right now. Now, what took place here two weeks ago, if Julie Dewitt had to defend herself in court, could she? No, she wouldn't. And I have some real questions and concerns about this law firm. Jack Dewitt had a court date. They have a recording. We can play it for you if you'd like. And it is the city attorney's law firm stating that Nick Schmidt was unable to go to a trial date, which this city is so hell-bent on getting people in court. Why can't your star witness show up? Because he had to have emergency scheduled surgery? Well, I don't know. You got pictures of him in the Philippines with his girlfriend, new girlfriend.
Just, just, excuse me for a second. Eric, what do you, what do you think we should do in this situation?
Wait.
I let you go for over five minutes.
No, you didn't. I've not.
Kind of, kind of what we want, want people to do, but I just, I just wanted to, I wanted to clarify something here because that's Eric's job.
I appreciate that. Mayor, council members, and residents, and I'm sorry, Christine, I did not get your last name.
Dolman, D-A-H-L-M-A-N.
No. I want to be very clear on this, and that is, is to both residents and so forth. There is a citation and an action before the court. Each one of these particular allegations that you've indicated, as well as any documentation you have and so forth in our civil society, that is where you have a judge who is nonbiased, who looks at the evidence and looks at the proper procedure in a nonbiased way. And, and of course, everything I'm saying is public and also be recorded, and that is the proper forum. What you bring before this council is public policy and whether the code is appropriately written and whether it should be rewritten in order, as was done with storage containers. And as you just heard, if you are in compliance with the code, you win. If you're not in compliance with the code, you lose. It's as simple as that.
Okay, I'm going to stop right there. Now, here's the deal.
This is not for discussion.
Here, here's where I have, here's where I have a problem. Okay, so Jack Davis stated.
He's our city attorney. I got to get his opinion.
But your city attorney tends to mislead you guys.
I haven't said anything misleading. I've talked about the law.
Okay, this is my time.
And if you're not going to bring up proper public forum matters and so forth.
Okay, but why is it that Jack Davis at the, at the June fifth meeting stated that the Dewitts had done so much to clean up their property that you were willing to work with them to keep them out of court? So why is it that Jack Davis can work with them to keep them out of court, but you council can't? The city attorney, I've looked this up. He has an obligation by law to enforce the law, correct? He also has an obligation to not charge people when you know that they're bogus crimes and bogus charges.
Understand that this, we're not a body that adjudicates these things. We're not set up to do that.
Ma'am, last time I said that Ms. Dewitts could have the code enforcement officer come back out. And if, if indeed, as she represented, she is brought back.
Jack Davis stated that he was out there.
Wait, wait, just a minute, Christine. I spoke with Ms. Dewitt and told her they'd made progress in cleaning up their property and that we needed to get together to have a meeting to schedule what they're going to do to keep the corrections going. And that meeting was held on June the twenty-sixth, when we had the meeting.
And Jim Smith, you were at that meeting?
Mr. Smith was at the meeting, Mr. Miller was at the meeting. When we had the meeting, Ms. Dewitt was not willing to discuss anything to continue what needed to do to come into compliance. And at the end of it, we said, this needs to go to court.
I gave you the reasoning. I gave you the reasoning.
Okay, we don't want to argue. No, no, I don't want to do this. This is not why I'm here. I'm not here to argue with you guys. I'm just here to say, whatever, you know, you're going to do whatever you want to do, but this selective enforcement has to stop. Mr. Worgen, or Worgen, or however, say you name it, he was at that council meeting the exact same time as the Dewitts. He is currently still living on that property. Why has he yet to be charged? Why is he not in court?
We don't, we don't know.
Exactly. This is, you know what they call this in law? Selective enforcement and code and selective prosecution.
You do not get away from essentially wrong conduct by indicating that someone's.
And you have no answer to say about your law firm lying and saying that Nick Schmidt was having emergency surgery, but yet there's pictures of him in the Philippines.
You can bring that up with a judge.
And we're being charged separately, me and my husband. I am sole owner of that home.
And the judge will definitely sort that.
Are you going to pay for the lawyer when she has to try to defend herself?
You have a public defender, right?
She doesn't know. They put in a motion in May to see if the public defender was even going to. Why hasn't she heard back?
Again, this is not the forum. We don't deal with such things.
I'm just saying, you know, the way that you guys selective and pick and choose who has to follow.
My point earlier was we don't want selective enforcement in East Bethel. Equal justice under the law.
And we're asking why isn't it equal justice under the law?
So if there are cases where that's not, then it's good that a judge sorts it out. If that's what's going on, we need to know that.
Well, I would take a look at your law firm, because seriously, lying about having emergency surgery and then in the Philippines. And I'm even going to take that.
We have no way of knowing if those, if that happened and then, you know, that's what a judge is for.
No, a judge is not going to tell you whether or not Nick Schmidt lied, or whether or not the city attorney lied.
He'll sort out the evidence. That's true. That's what he does. He or she sorts out evidence. That's what they do.
That's, that's, you're right, mayor. The court takes into account proper procedures and the truthfulness of witnesses and bases the case on the facts.
And I do, I think I speak for everybody here. We want you to have a satisfactory resolution of the matter in accordance with the law. Of course we do. We're fellow citizens. Same country, same state, same town. We, that's what we want for ourselves. We want it for everybody who lives here.
It's not happening, though.
No, that's distressing.
It is very disturbing.
Yeah.
And, and.
And that's what I was speaking to earlier.
And when you come to a city council meeting and you state that you are very ill, and this is in the beginning of everything, and it was voted to be addressed at a later time, which never happened. All of a sudden, was charges.
Oh, we're, we're going to be following your case closely.
I'm still sick, and I have to go back to therapy, and my husband is ill now, again. So, I mean, shit ain't going to get done.
Have faith in the judge to see reality.
You know, I, I have no faith in our justice system either. And I come from a family of judges, lawyers, and police officers and doctors, so.
Well, we'll wish you well in the process and hope, hopefully it comes to a peaceful and satisfactory resolution.
The council members and, and you as well, mayor, step up and take advantage of what you're, what you have power over and to look at.
Well, we're going to be following your case closely, and we want to know how it turns out. I assure you that. I am very interested in what happens.
It, it really is disturbing that that the attorney, the city attorney and the public defender are in cahoots. You know, there's a lot to say about that, so.
Well, thank you for addressing the matter with us.
That's ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay. Thank you. And Ms. Denise Laschinsky, can you come and visit with us?
Hi, I'm Denise Laschinsky. I have two things tonight. Our next Parks Commission meeting is going to be down at Coon Lake, so.
At the senior center?
I believe so, on the thirteenth. And the time will be earlier. I think we decided on six o'clock just because of how dark it gets now. And we'll be discussing park improvements and the skateboard park. I believe you have a skateboard park down there, but not a separate.
Right next to Mayor Peterson? That one next to the park, the ballpark?
Yeah, there's a couple of things down there.
And so the other, the second thing is what you guys have been waiting for all night long. I am sorry that the comments were made that offended and hurt people. I'm hoping, despite the ham-handed way it was handled, that conversations are being made to increase volunteerism in the city of East Bethel, because I feel like we need to get more people involved. And again, I'm sorry for the disruption of the city business, and thank you for this time to talk to you people.
Thank you very much for saying that. We appreciate it.
Do you accept?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All, as I say in the South, all is forgotten, all is forgiven. That's, in the South, though, when they say that, that means the opposite of what they're saying.
Well, we shouldn't say bless your heart, which has a totally different meaning.
Here we mean it, as we appreciate it.
Thank you. And like I said, Coon Lakers, I know you're probably in bed now, but please come to the next meeting.
You're not in bed.
Is it going to be posted on, you know, only on Coon Lake, for example, Facebook site?
I can probably talk to the community center. They have their own webpage, right?
Yeah, there you go. That or and only on Coon Lake, too, is a Facebook site with, I don't know, four or five thousand people subscribe to it, so.
I was going to say, there's that many people living at the lake.
Oh, no, everybody who ever lived there is subscribed to it.
Okay, yeah, I can, Mary Helen probably knows who to contact, too. She's on the Parks Commission, so.
But yeah, if you can broadcast it out, that'd be great.
But it would be great if we could get the feedback, because there's been some differences in opinion of what to do with the skate park, so.
Is Bonnie Harvick hosting you? She's on the Parks Commission.
We were going to go check out Smokey's new patio area.
Oh, yeah. That's nice.
Yeah. So if you guys could pass that information along, and I don't know, I know Tim will be there, but maybe one of you guys from Coon Lake might want to.
And the date again is?
The thirteenth.
The thirteenth.
At six. Normally, our meetings are at six thirty.
Three of us can't go.
Right, but two of you can.
Yep. Well, thank you very much, Denise, and I hope you have a good turnout.
I hope so, too. Sometimes, sometimes these, you know, we try to get around to talk to everybody, but sometimes the response is still somewhere. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda.
Make motion to approve, approve the consent agenda. Second.
Discussion.
I want to pull E.
Ah, yeah, I want to pull one here. Let me find it.
Which one? You pulling E?
E.
Hang on here, a little slow. Come on. This computer's faster than I. Oh, here we go.
Well, I'm going to pull A.
I want to pull D.
Now, let's see if I remember correctly. Now we vote on approving the consent agenda.
The remain.
As, as edited.
Yep, correct.
Good. Only takes three months, see? Okay, do we, so we have a motion, so we just need to vote. We don't need another motion, okay? So all in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Okay. So I pulled A, so I guess I'll have to go first. There's a very sketchy bill on here, and it's this eight hundred dollars by a DeRoches guy for a computer. I'm sorry, Bob, I couldn't let that go by. I was just kidding, I'm kidding, Bob. Anyway, the second one I had was a question on TIF one and one dash two and one dash three. But our earlier guest, I always want to call her Stephanie for some reason. Stacy, yeah. Well, it's somewhat in the neighborhood. I already addressed that. So then my only remaining question was on underwater utility ops, professional service fee paid to Fisher and Sans of about twenty-five hundred dollars. What is that all about?
That was for some contractual work we did for concrete curb and sidewalk repairs.
At the facility?
That resulted as a water break up in Whispering Aspens. So we, when we got up there, we had to dig it up back in January. We just patched it up temporarily.
Can you back it up a little bit and run that by me again?
In, in, in January of this year, we had a major water break in Whispering Aspens, so we had to come out.
Water line broke, huh?
Water line broke, and we had to get a contractor out there to help us repair that. It happened on a Saturday, and we got it taken care of that night or early the next morning. The cleanup work obviously couldn't be done until springtime. Everybody got a little bit behind, and this, we had to get this contractor out there. It's normally something we could do ourselves, but with all the patching work, we couldn't get to it. So we had the contractor come out and repair the sidewalks and the curb.
And when was this?
When was the contractor?
When was this done?
This is just done here in the past couple of weeks.
Oh, okay. I didn't get the thing about couldn't do it because of spring work or whatever. I didn't.
So that's what that bill is for.
All right, with that, I'll ask, do we approve item A?
Second.
I, I don't know if I can make a motion, so maybe.
Try again.
All right, okay. I've heard it both ways, so I don't know.
No, no, you can always make a motion.
Okay, so all in favor of approving item A?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Bob, item D.
Yeah, I got a correction on page one seventy-two.
This is the August seventh, twenty twenty-three work meeting minutes.
And on line forty-one, it said, DeRoches asked if Coon Lake was a pipe dream.
Apparently so.
Should have been, maybe. Uh, yeah, somebody might have been touching the pipe. It's Coon Lake.
So, since we have those polled, there is just a minor correction to page one seventy-one, line nine, Commander Paul Lenzmeyer stated fifteen thousand was allotted to the city of East Bethel. That should be five hundred and fifteen.
Good catch, Brian. I wondered about that when I went through it myself.
And with that, I move to approve D.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item E. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. And Jim, you had polled item E.
Yeah, I just have a correction on page one seventy-nine. Line item thirty-one, thirty-five, and thirty-eight. I think it's supposed to be Steve Stranland and it's Strickland.
Ah, another good catch.
That's all I got. So, I'll make a motion to approve item, line item E.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard. Okay, new business.
Item eight C one, cannabis moratorium, public hearing and discussion. City Attorney Eric Larson will recommend that council conduct a public hearing to consider a moratorium that would prohibit cannabis and hemp businesses in the city of East Bethel until the city has determined where such businesses are appropriately located in which zoning districts within the city. Mr. Larson will provide comments on recommendations to address this matter for further discussion after the public hearing.
Jack, is, uh, a public hearing noticed?
Yes.
Okay.
Public hearing was noticed?
Yes.
Because here's a strange thing. The only thing I wrote down here is under eight C, yep, I'm on the right thing. Go past your, your write-up, go to ordinance twenty twenty-three. And it's item, what? I know I'm asking you, I'm the one bringing it up.
Twenty twenty-three seventeen.
It's section, oh, come on, Kevin.
Four.
It had, it had the wrong date in it.
Uh, you're right, that's a typo. It should be the twenty-eighth, not the twenty-fourth.
Not the twenty-fourth or something, yeah.
Right. That would be a, a Scribner error. Um, I'm really impressed with this council here, picking up errors on, uh, on minutes and, uh, and also on that section.
Devil's in the details. So, we want, we wanna correct that, so if we approve it, we would approve it.
You'd approve it with it.
Subject to that correction, yeah.
Correct. So, with that, um, before we open the, uh, public hearing, this council approved at its August fourteen, twenty twenty-three city council that this particular public hearing, uh, proceed forward in order to give, uh, uh, public an opportunity to be heard on this moratorium. Proposed moratorium is, uh, in place to give this city time to decide where it wants its retail cannabis businesses. If it doesn't put the moratorium in place, it is true that there cannot be a lawful business, at least ostensibly lawful, until the Office of Cannabis Management actually issues licenses. That being the case, as of August first, under the law, and this is one of those things that the law was not as clear as it should have been, you could actually do retail sales lawfully, you just don't have the administrative license to do so. One of my biggest concerns is, is that there would be a person out there who basically says that the only thing that's stopping me is, is I don't have the license, but I put in my application. And then all of a sudden, we're sitting here and whether it be six months now or twelve months from now and so forth, we're trying to say, but you're running your business out of, out of your home and it's in a residential area. We are not allowing those businesses in residential area. We're not allowing it here and so forth. And then we would have to spend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in time trying to essentially address that when all we need to do is just basically pass and sign a preemptive moratorium. So, what I'm trying to do as a city attorney is to not prohibit anything that is lawful, not impinge any aspect, one iota of what the residents and the citizens in, um, the city of East Bethel can do. I'm just trying to essentially put the city in the best legal and then by natural extension, the best financial situation as far as being able to manage and oversee, uh, cannabis. I don't know when LCM is going to issue those licenses. The other thing we need to decide is, is are you gonna put a limit? You can have it limitless and that is basically not putting limit whatsoever, at which point you do not have limits other than where you'd have it, uh, potentially zoned. Um, but also as part of one of the time, place, and manner zonings is, is putting a limit. Remember, what we're talking about is cannabis here. We're talking about essentially another intoxicating substance, just like alcohol. And as a result, law enforcement obviously is gonna be dealing with what does that mean as far as essentially the well-being of citizens? Liquor consumption, fine, as long as it's done in a responsible manner. Cannabis consumption, obviously gonna be fine as long as it's done in a responsible manner. Just the way that the East Bethel and other municipalities are regulating the licensing and also the placement and so forth and who can essentially issue and sell liquor. Here's an opportunity that obviously the city of East Bethel and all cities throughout the state are gonna be looking at is, okay, how do we essentially regulate and oversee the retail sale of cannabis in a way that works for everybody? That is healthy for everybody. And that's one reason why, one of the other things you'll be looking at next month is, is also where's the responsible place to essentially in parks and so forth, be, you know, consuming them and smoking them. You'll be making that decision. So, that's the reason why I'm bringing this and recommending fairly strongly that you really seriously consider this moratorium. And I pause there because I hope one of the things you, you get out of Eric Larson, the Eckberg Lammers Law Firm, is, is that generally I try to essentially as much as possible, just kinda give you the tools and let you make the decisions and obviously this is a decision you have public policy can say yea or nay. But I hope that you rarely hear from me, I strongly recommend. If you don't, do I think things are, if you don't approve this moratorium, do I think things are gonna go to hell in a handbasket? Probably not. I just wanna prevent that from possibly occurring. Um, so that's what I'm trying to do is just to really, hopefully preventive measure that all it requires is a vote and a signature and then we can do the right thing with that. I, and as you can tell, I just gave you, I, I didn't see any reason to restate my report. Obviously, you've been reading it in detail, so I just wanted to give you just kinda off the cuff of really just how I sincerely look at this as I'm trying to really protect the best interests of the city that I'm representing. With that, Mayor, I, I know we have two public members here. At some point, you wanna open up the public hearing.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on resolution, excuse me, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen.
I would just say if he thinks it's a good idea, it's probably a good idea. I would repay our city attorney if he doesn't come up with good ideas. Thanks.
Okay. I'm glad you stuck around.
I'm glad we had a speaker.
Anything you wanna say, Aaron?
Absolutely.
You guys have been dealing with this in Cambridge too, I hear, huh?
Yeah.
We are far ahead of where East Bethel is. We are enacting ordinances and rules for sales and distribution and our, um, city administrator and our city attorney have jumped on board immediately and started.
Anybody else have any comments? All the hearings closed? Entertain a motion one way or the other?
So, uh, motion would include ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen?
With corrections.
Move to adopt, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three seventeen as amended, uh, with respect to section four, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
And section nine?
I'll, I'll move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash seventeen and into interim ordinance, ordinance of the city of East Bethel prohibiting operations of cannabis and hemp business in the city under Minnesota statute three forty-two point one three E and four sixty-two point three fifty-five with, uh, corrections as stated.
Them, them being, the date today is the twenty-eighth of August, twenty twenty-three, not the twenty-fourth of August.
Yes, yes, corrections as stated, yep.
Okay, let's just put it on the record, that's all. So, we have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd say the same thing I said last time. I got a couple of questions. One is how city attorney made the comment that you can go ahead and sell it even though you don't have a license and that'd be legal and it's not. Unless you're licensed, now maybe the little hemp products or whatever, the little gummy bears that you can chew, those are. But I don't understand doing a moratorium for a year when the licenses don't come out till twenty twenty-five, the moratorium will be gone, we've spent all this money creating a moratorium. I don't see why our city staff can't do this work without a moratorium, come up with the ordinances, figure out a zone where we can even do this stuff. Because you can't just tell people you can't do something. I, do I indulge? No, I don't, but that doesn't mean other people don't. And I, I just see us putting the cart before the horse. That's my personal opinion.
Uh, Mr. Larson, um, so, staff would, whether we do this or not, staff would be drafting up, uh, ordinance, uh, for a moratorium. How much does it cost the city to enact?
Doesn't cost any more money at this point. The, the money was putting together the, uh, ordinance and the, the staff report. Moratorium's in place. No more money. Um, to council member of the, uh... Well, I'll just do it. I'll just... I've been a land use for thirty-two years. I've seen a lot of arguments. And one of the arguments that I've seen that I don't wanna have to put up with and I don't want the city to put up with is that someone says, is that the law says that I could sell right now as long as I have a, a license. A license is administrative thing. And as a result, um, I have the right legally to sell out of my place of business and so forth as long as I put my application in as of, uh, August twenty-eighth. So that, um, so that when all of a sudden you, as the city, a year later, uh, say that where my business is located, I can't operate, well, your ordinance was, uh, put into effect after I applied. So, it's not the issuance of the license that controls my legal right, it's my application. Now, do I think that, that will win? No, I don't, but at least that is some, somewhat of a colorable argument and I've dealt with those arguments before. Um, and I, I, and I don't know what other creative, interesting little, you know, mischief arguments that will, will go on out there. So, for just a little, you know, basically a few pages of paper to make sure that we are inoculated, that we don't have to deal with that, so that we keep the status quo, that no harm by some mischief maker, some creative person is there, that's all I'm doing. Now, if I'm wrong, then, okay, but if I'm right and you don't, um, well, gosh darn, then you're gonna basically look at me and say, you know what, Eric? Yeah, we probably should've done that moratorium. And I, you know, you, you might be right, but I might be right.
Well, again, it's like saying you applied for your driver's license, you didn't get it yet and you go out driving, but if you get caught, they're not gonna say, well, okay, you applied for your license, but you don't have it with you.
That's apples and oranges. I'm talking about one of your rights.
You got your opinion. How much have we spent on it? Just out of curiosity, what has we spent on this?
About twenty-eight hundred bucks, so I read it. Right, somewhere in that neighborhood.
I, I, I wanna be clear that what you've spent is also an understanding of what the law is, look, and, and getting a, a total sense of this hundred and, you know, fifty-page law. I have spent, and my firm has spent hundreds of hours on this to get a hold of, of this and look at all of the particular aspects, both on the prosecution side, regulation side, and so forth. And what I've, uh, what I did in, uh, in June is I gave a report, I laid out what the law is and I in, informed the council this time that a moratorium was going to be, uh, recommended and I recommended it at that time. And then working with staff, we continued to work forward. I will tell you that for this new frontier in a complex area of, of law and being able to essentially provide as a chief legal advisor for this city all the panoply of possibilities and, and how the best to navigate and so forth, I'm very proud of essentially the value that has been provided to this city for that amount.
So, right now, it doesn't cost the city anything more to enact a moratorium.
Nope.
So, where we're sitting right now is either we wanna risk the city having any issues or we can approve it and there won't be any issues.
Well, the scare tactics don't work on me.
It's not a scare tactic. That's what it is.
Brian, you got your opinion, you gotta vote.
How many, how many other cities have you done this for, Eric?
The cities that I represent, every single one, our, our firm, um, I think pretty much every single one. Other firms, um, as you've heard from Mr. Berg and so forth, um, this is common.
That's, I'm just asking how many other cities that you've done this for.
Right.
Just to say that it's cost us twenty-eight hundred dollars so far for what you did. And so I'm looking at, you probably charge the other cities the same thing, right?
That'd be about, about the same amount of work, yeah.
Right. So then, if you did the same amount of work for each city that you've already done several times, we should get a discount. My opinion. Just curious.
You, you have gotten a discount.
Really?
Most definitely.
I don't know why or how you figure that, but.
Because what I've done is I build, um, based upon, upon the hour. And so what I've done is I've, I've taken the, uh, overall body of work and so forth that I haven't billed for and then I put it together and, and, and frankly, it's taking all of that knowledge and then tailoring it to each one of you and so forth. Where, where all of you, um, are taking something that is started from the new frontier, there's, there's no plug and play out there. We're starting from scratch.
Right.
And, 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 and we're taking a look at a hundred and fifty-page, uh, piece of legislation and, and, and we're studying it and so forth. And then we're taking it and we're putting together, uh, re, staff reports and, and figuring out what is the impact for each one of our cities and so forth. You, not every city had edible licensing. one of our cities and so forth. You, not every city had edible licensing and so forth. You did. I needed to take a look at that, and each, each of those had something that, that was different as far as how they went through their licensing protocols and all of that, and, and make sure that I was providing the right advice to you.
Right, but we're not sure if it's right or not, because you said that already. It could go the other way, it could go this way. We don't know, so.
And I just want to be clear. I, my job is to provide the best services I can and provide you all the tools. I'm not going to take any personal umbrage if you decide to vote against it, but I want to make sure that as best I can, I'm giving you the most informed and complete advice that I can as your chief legal advisor, and as I've stated before, I'm exceptionally proud of the product and the service and the advice I've given you. And now, you do your job, and I respect it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a little confused here. Now, maybe you, now, you're saying by the twenty-eighth of August that it's legal to sell? Isn't that what you said?
I, I said that as of August first.
No, I, I.
I was giving an example, you know, that, I was giving an example.
I know August first is when the law passed, but then you had said that it was legal to buy it, because in, in your example, you're saying, well, it's apples and oranges. If I'm comparing a license versus a license to sell pot, well, people are going to sell marijuana, they're going to sell it. They're, they're not going to worry about if they got a license or not.
Well, they.
I wouldn't think.
If they're selling right now.
They never have before.
No, right.
I mean, the irony is not lost on longtime residents of Coon, Coon Lake Beach, trust me.
That's, that's fine. I get that. I just don't want anyone to be in a position that they can do a legal gotcha.
You want to advise us on some legal insurance.
It's just, I just don't want a legal gotcha. It's, it's as simple as that. I just don't want a legal gotcha. If, and if you want to, you know, it, and I just want to prevent that.
Yeah.
You know, it's just good risk management, in my opinion.
Okay, where do we sit? Do we got a motion made?
Second discussion. Call a question.
Okay. I call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Are you abstaining? Or are you aye or no?
No, who's a no?
You're a no?
No.
Okay, so it's, uh, the motion fails two to three. Yeah, the irony of that is amazing, if you live on Coon Lake Beach. Anywho, uh, thank you, Eric, and please don't take umbrage.
I said I wouldn't, and I don't.
Okay, so next item is to set the town, town hall meeting for the fall town hall meeting, yeah?
Correct. Uh, our fall town hall meeting is usually held in November and is proposed for a date that doesn't conflict with any other municipal or school district meetings. Staff has reviewed and found there to be no conflicts with the evening meeting schedules for ISD fifteen, ISD eight thirty-one, or any East Bethel commission or committee in November twenty twenty-three, for the dates listed below in your packet. Uh, we set the date for this meeting in advance. We can place a notice on our website, calendar, social media accounts, newsletter on the cable channel. Staff has requested that city council set a date for the twenty twenty-three fall town hall meeting with those options as indicated in your package.
What was the best day in the past, or best day, have you found any certain day of the week, or just any?
We have found, none of it really affects the attendance.
I propose dead square in the center, November fifteen.
That could work.
Just my, just my opinion.
Reviewing the dates, Wednesday, twenty-second is right before Thanksgiving. That's Thanksgiving Eve.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't want that. Uh, fourth through the twelfth is deer hunting. We've traditionally not scheduled then.
There you go.
So that would leave the first, fifteenth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth.
I move for the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Fifteenth's good.
How you doing, Tim? Fifteenth?
Sure.
Now, Tim's got to travel real far to go deer hunting. What is it, forty feet?
Forty yards.
Forty yards, okay.
All right, fifteenth it is.
All right. I think we're in agreement on the fifteenth.
Very good.
Okay, final item is, uh, September work meeting canceled. That was going to fall on the fourth.
That actually is on the fourth, but the fourth is on Monday.
Labor Day.
Monday's a holiday, so it'd be on the fifth.
Yeah, well.
So we have nothing proposed for the work meeting. I know you said something about we need to look at these work meeting schedules. It's on our calendar. I suggest we just leave it on the calendar. We come up every month. If there's nothing we want to discuss, we just cancel the meeting. So I'm proposing that we cancel the meeting unless city council has items they wish to include.
I agree with it, particularly after this grueling three-hour meeting.
Unless the storage container is still on it.
Unless the stor- Smart aleck. Yeah, the whole meeting is going to be, let's do the storage container. Anybody opposed to canceling the meeting? Speak now or forever hold your peace.
So that's one. Let's just go ahead and make a motion, second, since it's officially on our calendar.
The town hall meeting, that starts at six thirty, right?
Six.
Oh, six.
Yeah.
Oops.
You've been pretty quiet over here. Let's hear a motion out of your two cats. Move that we, uh, looking for a motion that we cancel the September fifth, what would have been the September fifth town hall meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Tim Miller makes that motion.
Second.
Jim seconds it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You want to do staff reports and council reports?
Oh, I thought we were done.
I've got two more items. I have nothing to add for the staff reports.
Anybody got a council report? Sorry about that.
Yeah, if you got, still got your boat on your left on Coon Lake, you better take it off. Lake's down pretty far.
Well, that's the lift support, that lift report, not the staff report. Anybody got a staff report, or?
Yeah, um, I agree with when the fire chief was talking about. A lot of people like to burn the garbage. I mean, a good, nothing better than a good smell of a fire, nice pine, oak, whatever, but seems like around the neighborhood, they like to burn garbage. Don't want to pay waste management or whoever else to pick it up. I don't know what you're going to do. I, I don't care. Leaves and sticks are fine. Pine needles, that don't smell, but boy, you get that garbage and...
All right, I'll knock it off.
Oh, you quit it, Kevin? I wasn't going to bring your name up, but as long as you did.
Is that it?
Yeah, I'm going to adjourn.
Oh, okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nobody heard. Yeah, that was long.
Good night.
Good night, folks.
Oh, you've had it.